Excuse me.
9:15, we have a call. I know Councilman Slife is going to be along, but we'll get started without him. I'm chairing the day. I'm not Lilian Curry. So my name tag is there, so I won't say that. But preamble please.
Okay, now it's not sharing the limits.
Do we have a technical difficulty? Can we pause?
I think I can go with the preamble.
Okay, all right.
And so just so everyone's aware of what's happening, we had a request to move the presentation slides to the left screen. I think we'll need to work on that a little bit to make sure it's working with WebEx and everyone here for next time. But in compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's Open Meeting Law and Section 101.021 of the Codified Ordinances of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the City Planning Department conduct their meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Recusals from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any vote. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting has the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raise hand feature can be found in the Participants panel on the desktop and mobile versions and activated by clicking the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon again and mute your microphone. We will also be utilizing the chat feature to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located on the bottom of the WebEx screen. All meeting activity is being recorded via the WebEx platform. These proceedings are also being livestreamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels for comments are listed below. Communication with members of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by the Wednesday noon deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to the commission members prior to any scheduled meeting. The proper channels for public comment include sending an email to thecityplanning@clevelandohio.gov address with a comment or a letter, calling or leaving a message at 216-664-2210, sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall, 601 Lakeside Avenue, Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio 44114. Our meeting rules and procedures are that the chair will call each agenda item and then each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentation. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning staff to summarize Design Review Advisory Committee recommendations, if applicable, and any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comment is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after an agenda item has been called.
Thank you. Meeting's officially called. The order, roll call please.
Oh, boys. Anthony.
Present.
Fluker.
Present.
McCray Scott.
Present.
Sergeant.
Present.
And Slife.
Thank you. Next line of business, meeting minutes. Hope you guys had an opportunity to review them.
Second.
Roll call please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Epstein.
Sergeant.
Epstein.
And Slife.
Yes. Thank you. We're going to go a little bit out of order with one item and please let us indulge ourselves. It shouldn't take long. We're going to go to mandatory referrals. I think Julian and Sean. Do you guys want to make your presentations? Please turn on your mics if you're going to address the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One. There we go. My name is Julian Wilson, Real Estate Project Manager, MOCAB, real estate. The city has a 99-year lease with Metro Parks seeking to amend for the purpose of constructing an off-road trail that will connect Rivergate to Heritage Park and Rivergate Park to Heritage Park and Settlers Landing. So I'm here with Donald Donovan from Metro Parks to expound on the project.
Julian, good morning, everybody. Sean McDermott, Planning and Design Officer with Cleveland Metro Parks. Pleased and honored to be in front of you this morning. What we are requesting in partnership with the city is an amendment to the lease for Rivergate Park that is really a show of progress with all the partners working on the vision for the Valley Plan. City Cleveland, Metro Parks, and several other entities have been working together to string together public access along the riverfront, on really both sides of the river, but specifically what we're here today is to talk about the East Bank. There is a map in your packet in the agenda which might help as we kind of go through the request here. But thank you very much. So if you look at what's highlighted in yellow kind of near the center bottom of the screen, that is Rivergate Park. And Rivergate Park, that's a portion of Rivergate Park. And Rivergate Park is actually a conglomeration of many parcels, but the one highlighted in yellow was actually originally slated for a skate park. We found in partnership with the city in developing Rivergate Park that the skate park was not best suited on the riverfront because of the bulkhead tiebacks and we moved the skate park to the southern portion of Rivergate, which shows in the aerial there. That being said, since that time, we've amended the lease for Rivergate Park and actually added some other areas to the right. So that is to the east, along the riverfront, in Crane Park as well. What we're here before you today is to amend, to request to amend the lease one more time. And that is for portions of three parcels on the east bank of the river to the north of the Cleveland Rowing Foundation. So it's shown there on the map in green. And what that will do is will allow us in partnership to then set the standard and set the real estate in place for a next phase of trail. for a next phase of trail improvements. So there's a map that follows this, if we could go to the next page. So specifically, what the request today is for the areas underneath the proposed riverfront trail. We have the rights in partnership with Cleveland Rowing Foundation to extend the trail along the river to the portion that's before you today. And then Cleveland Metro Parks has taken ownership of the properties directly to the north of this. We are working to see that public access continues through those properties that we own and fee as well. The goal here is to connect the riverfront. I know Nora's here, so working with Bedrock, connecting the public access that's part of Bedrock's proposal all the way around, literally to Flat East Bank. So, happy to answer any questions you have of the request today.
Commission members, any questions, comments? I will move approval. Roll call please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slyffe.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much, thanks for moving us to.
Appreciate it. Alright, we're back on track. I promised I would be brief. So we don't have the conditional use? Oh, there it is, I missed it. Okay, trying to get back to the first page, guys. First thing, thing on the docket, conditional uses. It's a zoning matter to enlarge a residential facility for 10 persons located at 1582 East 86th Street. Xavier?
Good morning, hi there. My name's Xavier Bayham, in the City Planning. So, my presentation today is for the proposal for a large residential care facility located in a multifamily zoning district. And the proposal's coming from Edward Fields. I don't, is Edward Fields in the audience here? Is there a way to see if he's online? Actually, just wanna make sure he's present.
From a parliamentary standpoint, I would think we want the client here if we're going to hear this case.
That's correct. We can, you know, table or hold on to this? And I'll try to reach out.
I would propose to postpone it till such time we have a client here to speak on behalf of the project.
Table, does that mean if he comes today, we can still read it?
Postpone, postpone, in my opinion, I believe it's better because we don't have to take a vote to take it off the table.
Gotcha, thank you.
I can't, I can't motion.
I move for us to postpone the conditional use of the large residential facility for 10 persons located at 1582 East 86th Street.
My second.
Roll call please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Fluker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slyffe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to contact the applicant after my next presentation and see if he can still attend today.
Alright, okay, we'll get him back in if he shows up, thank you.
Great. Sorry.
We have another case.
We got one more conditional use coming your way. This one is for the Verizon Telecommunication Tower. They're simply adding a new antenna to the top and modifying some of the accessory equipment at the base of the tower. So, today I'm gonna present to you a conditional use proposal at 6545 Carnegie Avenue. I just wanna also check to see, make sure we have a representative from Verizon.
Kristen.
I believe Kristen.
Kristen Spunson is online.
Great, okay. So then I'll answer any other questions after my presentation to her that you may have. So as I mentioned, the proposal here is to add some additional antennas to an already existing non-conforming 104-foot tall telecommunication tower. And so, this property is located within a Midtown Lees Use 3 zoning district. And so on the screen, I'm displaying the icon in the center with a white logo and the tower shows you where the proposal is. And then the buffer around is a buffer showing 312 feet, which is three times the height of the tower, which is where we had to send public notices out, which I did 10 days prior to this hearing, per code. And so, here you'll see the site location. On the right, you'll see an aerial view. The bright yellow star indicates where the proposed tower addition is. On the top left, you see a location map that the applicant provided. And then bottom left, I'm displaying a southern view from Euclid Ave, if you're looking directly at the tower from the Goulunches parking lot on Euclid. And so, as I mentioned, you know, the tower's already existing, 104 feet tall. They're simply adding some additional antennas to the top, which isn't, they're not increasing the height of the tower. And then on the left, you see the site plan. They're basically modifying a lot of the accessory equipment at the base. And so the main reason you're seeing this today is because per Section 354 of the zoning code, they're an existing non-conforming tower and they're basically, you know, asking for alterations. So that requires this body to consider approval. And so, right now they're located in a Midtown Lees Use District, which is a standalone district, so the tower's not, the location is non-conforming. They're not in your landmarks district and they're not adjacent to residence districts, so that's fine. The height of the tower is exceeding the 60-foot maximum for this zoning district. So that's, these are, I'm just listing off the sections of the code that they're not conforming. And then lastly, landscaping requirement here is for these towers is that there should be a 10-foot in width landscaping bed with about six feet high evergreen trees or shrubs to screen the base of the equipment. And so none is being proposed. And so this body has the authority to vary these requirements and allow for conditional use of the proposal. And so, you're basically looking at this today considering does this, you know, addition of the existing tower and replacement of accessory equipment at the base meet applicable standards? And is the design appropriate and compatible with the surrounding uses? And so, that's all I have. I'll allow Kristen to, you know, give any further explanation if you require so.
One question, Xavier, is.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is there any reason why there was, the request did not satisfy the landscaping requirement?
So, my understanding is that the tower is actually pretty far set back into the property. So you can't see it, you can't see the base at all from Carnegie Ave. And you can barely actually see a lot of this equipment from Euclid in the Goulunches parking lot. But I'll let the applicant elaborate further why they decided not to.
Alright, I just wanted, I should have started with this. This is a zoning matter, so what typically happens is we hear from staff, then the applicant, then we take public comment. We take proponents who are for, opponents against. And we ask that everyone limit their comments to two minutes and please address the chair when you're speaking concerning this matter. So I'm gonna allow the client, who are the applicant, to opine on their proposal.
Good morning, this is Kristen. Yes, we are just looking to install four new antennas on that tower. I don't believe there's groundwork being done. That was really just a general note in the CDs. They might have to replace, you know, equipment in there, a swap out of, of something, but no substantial groundwork being done. And then we do have to install four modifications to the existing pipes on the tower to install the four new antennas.
And this is Xavier again, I will also add, there's no existing landscaping there. So you know, it's, as she mentioned, there's not really gonna be any work moving forward in the base.
Okay, any comments from the commission or questions?
I did have a question, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. What is the purpose of installing the antennas? Again, I didn't hear, is that for better service or what was it for?
Yeah, I'll attempt to answer that, thank you.
That's correct, just to maximize the service in the area.
Okay, thank you.
And you, you're welcome. And you can see from this photo here, we've got the, what's existing and what is proposed, those four antennas on the, on the three corners there. Is what we're looking to do. And then if you looked, I believe on the next page, you would see that mount modification, maybe the next one. We also did photosim so you could see the difference in the tower. There isn't much. I guess they've got someone else's, the city of Cleveland's proposal up.
Yeah, I basically use a lot of the site photos and examples, or, you know, elevations from the plans that were submitted.
Okay, is there any other comments? Because I had a couple of observations and insights. First, I believe if you guys can clarify, this does not, this does not front a public right or public rights away, correct? So you can't see the boundaries of this property. You're like buried within the buildings along the street, correct? Okay, so I wanted to be clear. The other question I had is really concerning of the critical mass of antennas on this, on this antenna. It seems like you're almost maxed out, so what happens after that? You start monitoring them lower? I need to understand what might, what this might mean in the future. Do you take them off to update technology? Would like to kinda understand how that works. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is potential, that would be dictated by the current conditional use permit, I believe, would tell you how many co-locations are allowed on that tower, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think, I think more of the question is like, you know, what's the plan moving forward if more antennas are needed?
Yes.
So I guess, Christian, would you elaborate, you know, moving forward, should there be a need for additional antennas? I guess is that the question, what's the plan? If you're gonna try to attempt to co-locate on the same tower, erect new towers?
That's where I'm getting to, yes. I mean, at what point do you hit, do you sort of create such clutter and noise, for lack of a better term, on that pole? I'm just trying to understand what it means in the future. And maybe I'm not articulating myself. At some point, you can't put any more antennas on this pole. And so what happens after that? That's the question, if that's clear.
Then somebody would probably look for a different site to put up a new tower. They could potentially upgrade the equipment. My understanding, and maybe I'm not articulating myself well, is that there is a conditional use permit on this tower that allows for a certain number of antennas. And that, at that, you know, I don't work, I don't, I don't go out and lease the sites or anything, so unfortunately, that's, I just work on permitting.
Okay, okay, that's fine. It was for my edification, to understand what this means in the future for our city. I kinda liken antennas, in my mind, to billboards. And, you know, there's such a proliferation of them. And so that was my concern. And I know that obviously, we can't do much about it because the state and the feds have mandated that this should happen. So, I just trying to understand what this might mean to the landscape, streetscape of this city in the future. It was just a general question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna close this portion of, yes.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Chair, before you entertain motions, if you're moving to public comment.
Yes, I was moving to public comment, I'm sorry. We're gonna close this portion of the meeting and open up the public portion. As I said before, we're gonna receive comments, if any, from proponents, people who are in favor. And then we will entertain opponents, people who are in disagreement with what's proposed here. And I ask that you keep your comments to two minutes and you address the chair. Are there any proponents who would like to speak on behalf of this project? Hearing none, I ask that, are there any opponents who don't disagree with the proposal? Hearing none, thank you. Commission?
Oh, sorry, Shannon Leonard raised her hand online.
Okay, Ms. Leonard?
Good morning, I just wanna clarify, the conditional use doesn't indicate how many antennas can go on a, in a singular pole. The section in 354 does encourage telecommunication facilities to co-locate where they can. But in the future, once this pole reaches its maximum capacity as determined by the owner of the pole, they will likely, if they need more cell coverage in this area, they'll come back to this commission for any new poles. So I just wanna clarify that the conditional use does not indicate it. And then, secondly, the pole itself is an existing non-conforming that doesn't already have the landscaping and it's behind a building. And then, thirdly, it did go to design review and they did agree to, that the landscaping, would it make sense because it's located on a cement parking lot in our buildings, not facing the public right of way outside of being able to be seen at Goulunches? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard, that holds tremendously. Commission members?
I want to clarify, do we need to name each condition or is it sufficient just granted?
This is Xavier again, you're basically including that within your motion to vary from the landscaping requirement. So, yes, you'll basically include that, you know, that kind of verbiage, some type of rationale.
Is the landscaping the height, and there were three of them, right?
Correct.
Can you go back so I can make sure that I have? Alright, so I move to grant this conditional use, accepting the, the location, height, and landscaping, or lack of landscaping as proposed, given the need for telecommunication infrastructure and its, its location on an existing facility.
Thank you.
Second?
Thanks. Roll call please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slyffe.
Thank you. Okay, we're now transitioning to design review. Near West Design Review, item number 13. Heron, Heronzy and Pearl Pocket Park. I believe Old Brooklyn, someone, a representative from Old Brooklyn's here to present this project. I guess I believe I have to swear you in. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter, now in hearing, under penalty of perjury?
I do.
It's all yours, sir.
Right. So my name is Connor Brentar. I'm the Neighborhood Development Coordinator at Old Brooklyn CDC. And also online, I have Jamie Schwartzberg, who is with Daru Landscape Architecture, the firm that we're working with for this project. And so today, we will be presenting our Pocket Park project, which is located at the corner of Pro Road and Henrichs Avenue. Definitely confusing pronunciation for sure. How do you pronounce that, I'm sorry? Henrichs. Okay, that's, that's what I've heard, that's what we use, but. Kinda hard to pronounce. Pronunciation. Yeah. But so anyways, this is an existing plaza that is located there on the southwest corner of the intersection. And so the purpose of this project is a renovation of the space to include more amenities. So we do have one very interesting facet of the project is that this is partially on public property, but also on private property partially. And so, as it exists today, this is about a 2,000-square-foot plaza. And right now, we do have some context photos in the next few slides. So, right now, it's basically just two benches. There are two trees, one of which is dying. And then that trash can there, and that's about it right now. So we do have some, a business located there just to the southern side of this site. And there's also another vacant space, which we're hoping will be filled soon. But so anyways, this is located at the southern end of what we'd like to call the Brighton Corridor in Old Brooklyn. So that's the section of Pearl Road located between Wildlife Way by the zoo and then right here, the intersection, right by State Road. And so, this is kind of the main business district. And so this is kind of the main business district of Old Brooklyn. And this is where much of our organization's focus uh for uh revitalization and redevelopment has uh existed uh basically for our entire existence, but especially over the last five to ten years. And so this is uh we like to think of the, one of the remaining um uh one of the remaining spots along the corridor that is still kind of a dead spot and, you know, especially in terms of the streetscape, because uh that was redone fully about ten years ago um to include more trees and sidewalk space. Uh so there's really a a lack of amenities for um both pedestrians and uh we also notified bicyclists in the area. So a large portion of this project, the point is to include more seating, which there's really a lack of uh along the corridor right now, as well as some greenery at ground level. Uh and we're also proposing uh bike racks because uh currently we have going on our farmer's market uh which uh brings in a lot of demand for bike racks and uh there's just really not very many along this whole section of the corridor, which is about half mile. So uh we we've really decided that that was a major need in this area. And so um moving on to the design, I believe the site plan is, yeah, right here. Uh I'll have Jamie talk a little bit more about that, if that's all right. Um and she can also answer any questions later on about specifics.
Do you need to swear me in?
Yeah, thank you. Um these, oops. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now in hearing under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Okay, it's your show.
Thank you. So um we are keeping the one healthy existing tree and kind of giving it more breathing space so we can do some planting around it. That was one thing we heard from our community workshops was that people really wanted more green on the corner. It's mostly paved right now. Um we're adding some raised planters closer to the street edge to kind of give some protection and some shelter from this, from the busy street. And then we placed the bike racks along the street edge um to again kind of provide a little bit of protection from, for pedestrians to separate from the street um while still giving enough room for the sidewalk. Um we're adding a new tree and then kind of providing this little seating area that we're hoping um operates. It can operate as a cut through, but it also kind of operates as a little seating area. There's a game store. Um one of the stores that's there is a game store. The other store that may or may not open is a coffee shop. So we've kind of been hoping that they would, both stores would be able to use it as a sort of outdoor activity space, overflow space. When the game store has events, they can kind of overflow out into the little plaza. And then sort of very low maintenance, because there's obviously not a lot of maintenance that's gonna happen in this plaza on the streetscape, but very low maintenance planting that will kind of take the streetscape conditions and you could see the um plant pallet we have there. And then this is just a little close up of the proposed plaza. Happy to answer any questions. It's pretty simple.
Uh thank you. I I just wanted to make a couple of comments before I turn it over to the Commission. Um I I truly appreciate your understanding of how people feel when they're in an open space. You created a, I believe, a decent buffer. So folks feel comfortable because the things that we feel at in this city, we think just because we add benches and chairs and open space, people feel comfortable. You always need backdrop. You need to feel um protected and and somewhat like you're in a room. So I do have a question concerning the planner. What type of planner is it? Is it a concrete planner? Is it, is it a fiberglass? I missed, I think I missed that.
Uh the plan is that it's steel, powder coated steel.
Okay, thanks. I I missed that part. That that's all I have. Commission members?
Uh this is the chair to the applicant. Just a quick question. Um Connor, in the beginning, you talked about uh the ownership on the corner. So there's the Geek Peak and then there's the other existing building. Um I guess I'm trying to understand the distance between that existing building and where this pocket park will be located if it were to become vacant. Um does that encroach on any of their parcel?
Yes, so through the chair, um as you can see in the design, we did also want to leave a little bit of room between the improved area and the building. I believe that's a five foot width. Um so that is in in case the uh the 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 one building that is currently completely vacant right now, the former library building, in case it does open back up, that would leave enough room for uh any future like steps that would need to be put in because it is a little bit higher than ground level. Um and then we do also uh have a relationship with the uh the owner of the Geek Peak Building. So um while we don't have uh like any sort of formal permission from either property owner yet, we do have contacts with both of them and they're both aware of the project.
Thank you.
Uh maybe I'm I'm old. But what is a geek peak again?
Neighborhood, you know what I'm describing?
So it's. Yes, so they have a variety of collectibles, um kind of memorabilia items. They have like game nights, I think, once a month or something like that. Yeah, they say they opened two years ago, I believe, and they've become a major kind of community hub in many ways. Uh we've heard lots of things about how they, you know, bring in traffic from all over the area, especially the west side. So that's.
Like big fun was like a big. Solid bringing like old school games and stuff like that.
Any comments, Ms. Bond?
Sure.
Hello, Commission. How are you today? Good. Um so yeah, this was highly received by Desire View at Local as well as um it's a mayor initiative to do open streets. So this is kind of an homage to have a pocket park in an area that currently is just underutilized. So we're super excited to see this come through. Uh Geek Peak, as mentioned, is a a game board place where people can come and gather community um of likewise interests. Um and we talked to the council person as well, who's super excited for this project, and he also participates in uh Pokemon, he mentioned on Local Design Review. Uh so we're super excited for this kind of thing and we want to see more in the city. So.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you.
Uh is to the. Okay. Also, I have one more comment about this. Uh I just wanted to know that we did already go through Pet Box for this project as we wanted to uh kind of see the feasibility of it before we brought it for any planning approval. So just wanted to note that.
Right.
Uh my move for approval of uh the Northwest Design Review two thousand twenty-five dash zero one three Henrich C and Pearl Pocket Park.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Flucker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Um I have another desire review item in the central southeast desire review district. Item number twenty-six sixty-eight oh six Harvard Car Sales Lot with Office. Um who do we have to represent? Oh, Mr. Weaver. Are you the only one presenting today?
Yeah, good morning.
Okay, I need to swear you in, sir. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now in hearing under the penalty of perjury?
I do.
And Chair, with your support, I'd like to invite Ms. Leonard to give a little bit of context before we hand it over to the.
Thank you. So we're gonna take the staff report first.
Okay.
Uh good morning again. Shannon Leonard, Chief Zoning Administrator. Um if the PowerPoint could move to the site plan, please. So just to give you guys a little bit of context of uh this case, uh this case is for a used car lot on Broadway. Um back in uh twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, a rezoning commenced from seventy-seven to Broadway, north and south of Harvard, doing a phased rezoning over three um ordinance changes. Uh this applicant was submitted in twenty twenty-one uh to change the use after the zoning had been uh to a used car lot. Um they were denied and they were denied at BZA and then they appealed to common pleas. And then it eventually went up to the Ohio Supreme Court. Essentially, what happened was the applicant acquired the property at some point during the rezoning. And so the Supreme Court directed it back to the Board of Zoning Appeals uh to be heard under the original general retail zoning, which allows used car lots um if they meet certain conditions when they're adjacent to residential. Uh so the applicant went back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and committed to um drawing up a fully site compliant uh zoning code compliant um plan for the used car lot. Uh the Board of Zoning Appeals were uh directed to review under the general retail classification. And then from there, um the applicant postponed, went back, did a new drawing, came back with a fully zoning compliant um for this use in a general retail, under the general retail zoning. Uh we adjudicated it as such. They do not need variances anymore under the general retail. So that case was dismissed. So they are now before you because there's new construction on the lot um for the office that you can see on the right corner here. Um and so under the general retail zoning, they do not need any zoning variances. But under your purview from a uh planning standpoint, we would ask that you condition how many uh used cars can be on the lot when you're in your motion. Um it is a eighty-foot lot, which meets the sixty-foot minimum width for a used car lot um at this location. Um but it is a lot of cars. So from there, I'll defer to you all to make your uh determination, but uh you can condition the amount of uh cars within the lot um as part of your uh design um determination. So thank you. And I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Shannon. Mr. Weaver?
Uh good morning, uh Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, fellow citizens, Kurt Weaver, architect, Cleveland, Ohio. Thank you for hearing our case this morning. The presentation that I have for you is the presentation that was made, uh the second presentation that was made to the Design Review Committee. Um my copy of it has my notes and the drawings that I have in front of me are the updated drawings that were put together in response to that meeting and then were uploaded uh through the portal so that everybody had the the reinterpretation of the comments from that meeting. Uh the 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 box on the right side of the presentation were the uh initial uh review comments from the conceptual meeting that we responded to in this meeting. Next slide, please. This uh shows the the site as you're looking at it to the south. Uh yes, south. Um we have an adjacent uh two-story existing structure to the uh west that you see there on the right side of the slide. Next slide, please. Uh if you look slightly to the east, you see the adjacent uh home that is to the east. It has a uh larger yard, so you can see the board-on-board fence that encloses that yard that's part of that home. Next slide, please. This again shows us looking directly at the site. These photographs um are from sometime August, September of twenty twenty uh when AKW was commissioned to start this project. At that time, the existing home had been removed. So you see the the site uh resultant of that home removal and the existing uh dairy structure that is all the way to the back of the structure. Uh conceptually, at the time, the intent was for that to be renovated as our office space for the used car lot on the site. Next slide, please. This shows that structure. This this would be the uh east elevation of that structure. It is composed of a uh precast concrete mod- modular block that is a rusticated finish that actually has uh smooth sort of coins on the corners that you can see there. Uh the structure did have some differential settlement on that, what would be the northeast corner of the structure. So at the time, we were to stabilize that corner and then restore the structure as the office. Next slide, please. This shows the, what would be the west elevation of that structure. Um there's one window on the south elevation. You saw the door and the two windows on the east elevation. This side um is very close to the property line, some fifteen or sixteen inches off the property line. Uh so it did not have anything. And then you could see where the electrical service was coming into the structure. Next slide, please. This is the nineteen thirty-five Sanborn map that shows you the parcel uh the adjacent uh existing two-story masonry structure, uh the home that was there and then the dairy structure that was in the in the back and that uh what would be the southwest corner. And it shows um some form of a of a of a barn or garage structure that was also on the property. When we started the project, uh the portion of that uh what would be the lower uh south and east area where the X is through, that was a concrete pad that remained on the site. We were maintaining that, uh but it was subsequently removed when we um when the city took it upon themselves to remove the existing structure that remained that we intended to restore. And that concrete pad went away. Next slide, please. This is our Harvard Avenue elevation looking to the south. It shows uh that uh what was the former dairy structure to the rear uh to be restored as our office space. The curb cut is nominally in front of that. Uh through design review, we made some adjustments to that curb cut to realign it with the parking lot as it's designed. Um it also shows the uh our our intent to put the ornamental fence along the that southern property line uh with the appropriate landscaping. And uh there's a guardrail there that you can see that runs in front of that telephone pole that is existing that we're making a slight adjustment to when we make a adjustment to the apron. Next slide, please. This is our site plan prior to that uh uh approved uh second design, design review meeting that we had. Um the alterations to this site plan had to do with uh eliminating the the downward leg of the apron that encroaches slightly on the, what would be the western ten-foot setback. So uh in essence, the apron was moved up the page nominally five feet so that it could be aligned in a more straight line with that uh western curb. The parking lot is curbed all the way around. It has one uh central drain catch basin in the middle. It is a a concrete apron, a replacement concrete apron compliant with the city standards, coming into a concrete apron to an asphalt parking lot. Uh the lot itself uh is, as you see, defined uh with ten-foot setbacks on three sides. And then when we realigned the property, we pulled the rear uh curb up to align with the north edge of that uh former existing dairy structure that is now to be replaced in kind as our office structure. The trees that we had along the back were the the honey locust tree. And it, the the amount of trees on the site expanded. We're using a thirty-foot on center spacing for those trees. And they now encompass all four sides of the site. So I believe there are two on the north property line, three along the south property line, three along the west property line and five along the east property line. The um ornamental fence runs nominally five feet off the sidewalk to define uh the front yard. And then the landscaping that runs along in front of the fence was requested to be changed to Everlow Hugh. And it's been realigned in that purpose. I think there are fourteen that run along that length of that uh frontage. The uh parking criteria uh requires twenty-five percent of spaces in a used car lot for visitor spaces. So we have a total of uh twenty-one car spaces shown, of which the one, two, three, four, five, six in the sort of nominal center area there are uh striped and subsequently identified with visitor parking uh nomenclature on the asphalt. Um what else? Oh, there was a requirement for for. What else? Oh, there was a requirement for lighting for the parking lot. So you can see there are four, two on the west property line or west curb line, two light fixtures, and then two on the east curb line. The two on the east curb line had to be adjusted slightly per the photometrics of the fixtures and the height of the poles and how that lighting wanted to comply with the requirements for parking lot lighting. Next slide, please. This is going to show you, this was an updated site plan that went into that meeting that showed a lot more trees and then was reduced per the 30-foot spacing on the trees. I think I had them at 10-foot on this one. Next slide, please. This is the site, this is the site lighting plan that shows the implemented photometrics and spacing on the light poles with the criteria for the light fixtures. Next slide, please. The board-on-board fence detailing. Next slide, please. The ornamental fence detailing. We were very particular about our ornamental fence. So we're trying to avoid using Amerifence or any of the fence modular prefabricated fence products that have all the pieces, parts that end up disappearing over time. So we've specified a fabricated steel fabricated fence with steel componentry to either be galvanized and/or powder coated so that we have a decent finish on it that we can expect to look like it wants to look over time. Next slide, please. We included our planting details just to make sure that we got our planting correctly. Next slide, please. This is the footprint of the, what was the former dairy structure now to be replaced in kind. We maintained the exact footprint, the exact exterior dimensions. When we reworked the wall type to be a frame veneer wall, the nominal dimension of that wall thickness was pretty much the same. So our layout stayed the same. You can see it's very straightforward as a small office space with a restroom. Next slide, please. This is the exterior of our replacement structure. We've literally maintained the exact running bond pattern for the stone. We have it specified in sandstone, but we have some feedback from our preservationists to give us the right specification for the precast concrete. We're showing, the color scheme that we're showing is as it's depicted with a green shingle roof, the dark green for the gutters and downspouts, some alternate lighter green colors for accent, and then the golden rod color for the e-trim and the door and window trim. Next slide, please. This identifies our specific colors. Next slide, please. Here they are. Next slide, please. The green roof shingle, the sandstone, and then the substitute masonry, of which we are continuing to ensure that our specifications are accurate for that component. If there's any questions, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any further staff comments from the planner for this project?
Yes, to the chair, I think staff planner Kenya Gray is online.
Mr. Gray?
I'm sorry, I was muted. Yeah, so they came through the design view two to three times. Mr. Weaver has been very cooperational with the suggestions that my design review committee has had, especially pertaining to the improved and added landscaping. The trees that lie on Harvard will help soften up what this car lot will make the corridor look like. So this case actually predates me and my time here at city planning. But I think where it's at now is in the best place that we can get it. So I recommend approval.
Commission, any comments, questions?
I mean, while I don't think the location of the used car lot is in the best place, I do commend the applicant for taking, I think, above and beyond the measures to screen, plant, have a nice fence, and make it the best kind of used car lot that it can be.
I want to understand that the graphics showed 21 totals, but it would be eight spots are six spots. So basically, there's 15 cars for sale, six spots. Does the, is planning staff seeking the motion to denote the total parking or the number of, the breakdown of parking?
We would recommend that the motion specify the maximum number of cars for sale on the lot.
Maximum number of cars, which would be 15. Okay. This is quite an endeavor. I can't believe we went to the Ohio Supreme Court over 15 hours. But that's what we do. Here we are. I'll hold off on making a motion if there's any other comments. Commission members, any thoughts, comments?
I will move approval of the car sales lot with office at 6806 Harvard incorporating the recommendations from Design Review and stipulating the maximum number of cars for sale at 15.
And I second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slade?
Yes.
Thank you. Good luck, sir.
Committee, thank you.
We have another desire. You, Adam Euclid Porter, Book I, Design Review. It's item number 21, the Cleveland Foundation A1 Building Demolition. Who might we have here? And I will have to square you in.
Sure, sure.
If you would like to talk, please hit your green button, but I need to square you in first. Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now inherent under penalty of perjury? I do. There you go. All right.
Great. Yes, I'm Roseanne Potter. I'm the Chief Growth Officer and Chief Financial Officer at the Cleveland Foundation. And we want to thank you very much for having us here today. We really appreciate the audience and the time. I believe you do have some slides for us.
Yes, and I'm Victor Barbelotto, Vice President of Real Estate at the Cleveland Foundation.
And our licensed architect.
I don't know if that's a bonus or not, but yeah, right.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We're coming here today to ask you for the demolition of what's known as the A1 Building located at 71st and Euclid Avenue that we've had ownership of since 2019. If we move to the agenda, you'll see that we're going to just go briefly through kind of a summary for you as well as the history and put into context some of the existing conditions and the request for full demolition. And then also share with you what could be some potential next steps and future plans. Just as background, I am the company officer that did purchase the building on behalf of the organization back in 2019. So I did actually walk the building at that time and knew its condition at that time as also as its current condition today. So if you take a look at the building here located at the corners, we said it's located on three parcels, but the building is actually located only on two of the three parcels. It's a two-story building, 50,000 square feet, including a basement. We did have two nonprofits who were using the facility shortly after we acquired it in 2019. They were using it for storage of, one of them needed it for, they were an event type of nonprofit, and so they had a lot of event equipment. And the other one was also more of a children's play thing. So they had a lot of children kind of apparatus. And so it was actually being very useful and purposeful in that way back then. But then it became severely damaged in 2023 at the time of the tornado that came through. So we are requesting, after thoughtful consideration, full demolition of the building. We do come with a letter of support from Councilwoman Stephanie House Jones. And we really want to thank her for her time in reviewing this and providing that letter of support. We believe that this is really the first step towards development of that property. We, after the tornado hit, we did further analysis. We had done an analysis when we bought the building, and then we did a further analysis after the tornado hit. We did receive a grant from the Ohio Department of Development for $325,000. We got that grant and approval towards the end of last year. And we would be willing to match the $108,000 requirement for the total cost of demolition of about $433,000. The grant does expire at the end of this year. So if we don't make use of it at this time, you know, before the end of the year, we will lose that opportunity. Once demolished, we will pursue activities with developers. We have had some initial inquiries, but they are interested in knowing the outcome of today's demolition before having further conversations with us. I'm now going to turn it over to Vic, who will go through a little bit of the history for you.
Thanks, Roseanne. Everything the foundation does in Midtown is shaped alongside our partners and key stakeholders. And our work is continually guided by the Midtown Vision Plan that was adopted by the City Commission, Planet Commission in 2021. And up on the screen right now, the Euclid Gallery sits at that start location. Sorry, the A1 Building fits at that start location. And the site is designated as a mixed-use development. The site is surrounded by actually a really diverse mix of buildings and uses. Nearby, we have townhomes, single-family residences, as well as commercial and light industrial buildings. To the east, you'll see we have the one Midtown Townhomes. Just south across from Euclid Avenue, we have the Foundry Lofts, Baker Electric Building and Dealer Tire. And to the west, we have the Euclid Gallery, as well as the first Energy Garage. My team actually really had a great time digging into the history of this property. And we were able to trace records all the way back to the late 1800s. Originally, this site was Albert Withington's mansion. He was a prominent Cleveland banker. The mansion was later demolished, but we don't know the exact date or reason for the demolition. The current A1 Building was constructed somewhere around 1920. And we've been told it was the former showroom and warehouse for Baker Electric Cars. But internally, we've been unable to validate that information. In the 1960s, the building was purchased by the Midwest Box Company. They operated there until they sold the building in 1981. Since 1981, the property has transferred owners about six times. And the last known tenant was A1 Liquidators. Also, through our research, we learned a lot about why the building looks the way it does. Our team reviewed many different plat maps made available through the Cleveland Public Library, including one from 1932, which is on the slide in front of us. It shows that the A1 Building was actually designed with the expectation and, and, oh. I apologize. Thanks, Roseanne. With the anticipation of a building to the west of it on Euclid and 71st Street, and possibly even to the east as well. And that does explain the really simple construction and lack of detail on the west and east facades. They were just never meant to be seen from the street themselves. Only the south elevation along Euclid Avenue, part of the offices and showroom part of the building was actually meant to be visible from the street. And this is likely because they anticipated other warehouses or retail buildings, you know, kind of filling it around it. Today, though, the building does sit fairly isolated and out of context and in a very different environment from which it was originally designed. The site is located in a Design Review District, but the building is not a designated landmark or listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And we are zoned in MMUD1 Midtown Mid-Use District. I'm going to turn it back over to Roseanne real quick to look at existing conditions.
Thanks, Vic. So what we wanted to do here is give you some pictures that are very current, that show the condition of the building. But I would say to you that it's not too dissimilar, especially on the interior from what I saw back in 2019 when we acquired the building. And that's why we never had anyone using it as an office or inhabiting it. It was really only to let people store materials and come in and out. We did hire, after acquiring it, a consultant to assess the hazardous materials and the condition of the building. We found asbestos pretty rampant throughout the building. PCB material also found in some of the ballast. And, you know, we knew that at that time, there was going to be a tremendous cost in order to try to remove these elements. So we wanted to be thoughtful and see over time, and we wanted to have it be in use. And so we actually, the use with the nonprofits was a good use of the space for us during that period of time. If you go to the next slide, you'll see here along the warehouse and garage area, the rest of it was, it was already damaged before we purchased it. And so you can see the deterioration really on all elements of the facade of the building interior. And if you go to the next slide here, you can see that it really does require quite a bit of repair or replacement. The structural issues, the foundation movement, the cracks, it is very unstable. We believe that it is unsafe for internal use. But really, basically, you can see from the ceilings to the walls to the floors, all of them need severe repair.
And not to cut you off, Roseanne, but it's only clear that this is, these are photographs of the south portion of the building, the part along Euclid Avenue. These photos here, as well as this next slide.
Yeah. And so you can see even in the basement is now has groundwater seeping through it and accumulation of mold as well coming in. This is not water from rainwater. This is groundwater coming in from underneath. And then lastly, if you take a look here, you can see, you know, basically a lot of rot and damage to the building that it continues to just evidence itself from all elements of materials, from the wood to the brick to the cement to the foundation. All of the different elements are really severely damaged. And again, it is not too dissimilar to what we bought it at, to be honest. But the next slide shows you as well. The real game changer here was in August of 2023. This didn't make the news, but when that tornado came across and went up Euclid Avenue and it took the steeple off of that church across the street, it also took the roof off of this building. So you can see here on the right that it literally was sweeping down. It took off all but one side and was sweeping down. It cost us thousands of dollars to get this roof material taken off. And you can see how much of it came off in the left picture. You know, basically, it's almost a total roof repair cost. So at that time, we felt we had to ask the nonprofits to take their materials out. We no longer felt that the building was stable for them to even keep their materials in, unfortunately. And so we immediately got to work. We got an estimate for the roof repair. The roof repair was almost equal to what the cost is for the total demolition, $415,000 just to repair the roof. But that would do nothing to all of the damage inside as well. And so then I'll turn it back over to you, Vic, for the last slide.
Thank you. And we do want to address that, you know, trying to save that Euclid facade by keeping the south end of the building could really limit future options and opportunities for redevelopment. First, this offices and showroom portion of the building that's south end on Euclid, it's only two stories tall. We could gain better efficiency and density by utilizing a structure that's three or more stories tall and complies with zoning and the other new developments in our neighborhood. Next, the existing building is an all masonry structure. Trying to reconfigure masonry walls to new floor plans and Trying to reconfigure masonry walls to new floor plans and layouts could be really structurally challenging and costly. Also, retrofitting these existing walls and floors with plumbing and heating could be difficult. And lastly, like, like Roseanne mentioned earlier, you know, we plan to lease this land. Requiring a developer to keep part of the building and take on the hazardous materials and structural issues we discussed, you know, may reduce interest and ultimately delay development of the site itself.
So we did, obviously, then, as soon as we got the cost repairs, we did quickly thereafter apply for the grant for demolition from the Department of Development. And just late last year, we were awarded that. So again, we do think it's probably in the best interest of the community for us to have to take down this building so that we can put something that would really become a permanent beautiful asset going forward that could be inhabited, that could be used, and that could make it much more of a thriving neighborhood asset, much more than what it certainly could be repurposed for today. So I'll turn it back to Vic to just give you some of the other details of, of future plans.
Cool. Now I'm going to go to the fun future plans. First is, back in two thousand and twenty-one, the building itself is actually featured in the Cleveland Walls Project. And on the south facade, there is a gorgeous material by Isaiah Williams. He calls himself Starby. And earlier this month, I actually got in touch with Isaiah and we spoke about, you know, how he would feel about this building coming down and how it could affect his murals. And what's really actually great about Isaiah's mural, it's that it's on these wooden boards that can be really carefully removed and reused in either future TCF projects or donate to a community group if they would like to display them as well. And just to make sure we documented them appropriately, we actually had them professionally photographed. During that same year in twenty-one, the west facade was also featured in the Cleveland Walls Project. And interestingly enough, back in April, the artist who had done these murals called me, asking if they could repaint new murals over their existing ones. And I said, you know, guys, actually, we're looking to potentially demolish this building, but we may have a different site that you could use. And I've asked for a proposal from them and they're very excited. But just like Isaiah's murals, we had these professionally photographed for documentation purposes. And, and while we aren't able to save the murals on the west facade like we could on the south as Isaiah's, we're hoping that actually these could be displayed as framed artwork in future exhibitions throughout our buildings. And, and an example of our commitment to preservation is on the right of this slide, where you see that restored veterans' memorial plaque that we salvaged from the Stern Building. We actually salvaged it, restored it, and remounted it in the Midtown Collaboration Center. It's in one of our conference rooms and everybody absolutely loves it. And during demolition, should it be approved, we do plan to preserve some key architectural elements of the building, like decorative cornices at the roof, as well as the really beautiful carved entryway.
So lastly, we would just like the commission to understand that we do have a vision for Seventy-first Street, similar to a vision that we had at Sixty-sixth Street. We do want to create a there, there, something vibrant, something exciting, something that will be useful and, you know, maintained, you know, by us in perpetuity. And so we do respect, obviously, all of the property that we've bought in Midtown. And our, our ultimate goal is to be good stewards, to make sure that, you know, whoever we partner with on the development side, we would retain the land and we would make sure that, that, that it is always stewed into good community use. So with that, that kind of concludes our presentation for today. And we would welcome any questions or comments that you have for us.
Before we talk about this, I'd like to hear from the staff first, and then, then I'll open up to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kenya Gray speaking. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Speak up a little bit.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me any better?
Yes.
Okay. Our staff recommendation was that they keep the building that is on the south end that's facing Euclid. We want to keep that building because we think that having to build a footprint along the street and where is that? It just has so much historical value to the community, as well as the fact that we do think that it can be repurposed. I understand the argument, but that's just what our staff came to the conclusion of. We also think that the artwork on the side of the building is very important to the community. So I know there's a lot of pushback from the artists that actually have artwork there now. And that's what the staff thinks should happen.
Think we've lost them. Is that?
What the staff thinks should happen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I can't hear. I'm old. I was giving my initial thoughts and I'll turn it over. I wear a lot of hats. I live at Eighty-second and Euclid. I've been there for twenty-five years. And we've been, we invested before with the Health Line, before this Cleveland Foundation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I'm an architect, so, and, and I'm on the planning commission, so you're going to get those perspectives from me. Although I understand anything that you're talking about, I think what Cleveland Foundation is attempting to do is some, it's, you know, it appears to be altruistic, but I don't think it is. And I'm going to tell you why. As a resident, as an architect, and as a planning commission member, I don't know what your plans are. You're buying a lot of property in health in Midtown, and I don't understand what, what it is you're doing. What's, what's the overall strategy so we can understand what, what this means? Because now we just don't know that. I mean, I just feel that I'm, I, I have, I have the Cleveland Clinic to, to my left flank and I have the Cleveland Foundation to my right flank. And, and as a resident, I, I don't think you guys have been overly transparent, on number one. Number two, I think there needs to be more intentionality and outreach in the community relative to what you all are doing. Just because you're there doesn't mean that it, it works for everyone. I think there should be more tight meetings. I don't think it should be community engagement by informing, because that's on this end of the spectrum, which is sort of tokenism. And, and you need to be somewhere in the middle. I'm not, I'm not asking you guys to, to have the community tell you exactly what to do or how to do it. But I think, in my opinion, if, if that's, that's your goal, and I believe it is, I think you need to be more open, more transparent, and more forthcoming about your plans as, as a community foundation and now as a real estate developer and, and landowner in, in, in our community. So I'm going to turn it over to my commission members for, for the conversation. Thank you.
On, on a rare occasion, I, I may disagree with Commissioner Member Fluker. I think you guys have taken, I think, pretty tremendous steps in kind of the archival process of the building. I actually ride my bike down to Euclid quite often going to the east side, so I see it pretty often. I think the archival process kind of sets the tone for what a developer might want to incorporate with regards to the history, both of the original building and all these kind of artworks that have gone through, to completion afterwards. I think my, my only comment, really, that, you know, during the demolition, if there's a step further, whether there'd be actual, like, physical artifacts within the building, any kind of reused masonry or things that can be potentially repurposed and stored for the next phase of this project. But I think, you know, this sets a precedent for the kind of thinking about what's going to happen there and making sure that we're archiving things that you can lend or give the developer to kind of reincorporate as a new development happens. And I commend you guys for doing that.
We'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, it's our plan.
So I, I guess. I'm hoping to split the baby one. I mean, I, I agree, I agree generally that the condition of the building's not where it needs to be. The, the demolition cost seems very high to me, but what do I know? However, I, I do think it's fair, it's a fair point that. We must search in twenty nineteen?
Yes.
So twenty nineteen, six years ago, tornado, two years ago, grant received seven months ago, minimum, if it was, that's the tail end of twenty twenty-four. So, so it's, it seems like this kind of, there, there's been time for sort of a holistic conversation about what the next step is. And, and I would be interested to have more than, we are going to reach out to developers. Like, is there a master plan for the Cleveland Foundation's campus? Are there additional properties that are being, you know, potentially identified for purchase? I, I guess, I, I don't think it would be problematic to, you know, postpone and wait to receive a more detailed presentation of the bigger picture, just to understand where this fits into it, because we haven't seen anything, to my knowledge, the larger campus. And I, I do think it's, it's a fair point that we would ask for it, so.
Through the chair to the presenter, I have to concur with my colleagues. I'm concerned about the future plans of what's going to happen with that area. And I think that what we should do is postpone and wait to see what the overall plan is for the future for that area. I too live in the neighborhood and would like to see something more concrete than what we saw today for the future. Thank you.
Through the chair to the applicant. One thing that's interesting about the design review's comments is that it seems very hyper-focused on the historical preservation. And you all have articulated in one of your slides that is not in fact registered. And so maybe this is more of a question for a planner about a bit more texture on the conversation, because beyond the historical context, I guess I'm curious as to whether or not other members of the Design Review shared any of the concerns that have been brought up by my fellow colleagues. And I would just concur that I also feel that equitable community engagement and civic engagement are critical when projects of this magnitude are being proposed, not just because it's in a part of our city that has been historically displaced and disenfranchised, but just for the betterment of the city at large. I would agree that we see value, obviously, in the Midtown area, or excuse me, the Cleveland Foundation making a decision to, to move its headquarters to the Midtown area. But I also, I'm a resident by my business, about twenty blocks up. And I also would agree that not having a clear understanding of the overall vision and also just some of the, what seems to be some mixed perception around the artist's perspective. I actually was a volunteer at that exact site when Cleveland Walls was here and really enjoyed being at that location when I volunteered that weekend, over one of the weekends. And so I also want to just have clarity. I appreciate the efforts of documenting, taking pictures, and the prospect of future display. But the integrity of those artists, I just want to make sure that there's clear communication with them and having clear documentation, because I think their, their opinion reflects the record of not just the residents, but their value that they've brought to the creative economy here in the city of Cleveland.
Thank you. I just, I have one other thought. And again, I'm excited. It's not that I'm not. I, I just think we just need to understand fully what your intentions are in our, in our neighborhood and community. I'm just going to give an example, because I hate talking in generalities. For example, you, you guys have been there for a couple of years, and I do know that E sixty-sixth has planned to do infrastructure. But what escapes me is there could, could have been a small intervention to actually create a more welcoming and engagement, engaging and trained to, to your campus. There's no pedestrian signal, signal at E sixty-sixth. It's just a traffic signal. And so if I try to cross there, there's nothing to tell me that I have ten seconds or thirty seconds. Those small little interventions go a long way. And, and I know that, again, I know that infrastructure is coming, but that could be incorporated in the infrastructure. Things like that matter to us. I mean, I, I support the businesses there because I believe that's what we should do as, as, as responsible and civic-minded residents. But I think we can do more. We can listen, look about how people live, put yourselves in our shoes. And so I think then you'll, then you'll see things that aren't obvious to, to you and not just do, but do with. I mean, do for, but do with. So I've done preaching, because that's what I do, but I think you need to hear what we're saying. Thank you.
I just wanted to get clarity from my colleagues based upon the councilman's recommendation. Through the chair.
So I can, I can do that and maybe do, make a motion as well. But, but I, I think, I'm open to other, other suggestions. But I guess the information I'd be looking for is sort of a, I know that, I know a ma- master plan is, can be a very elaborate, long process. I don't know, I, I don't think I'm specifically asking for that as much as a zoomed-out analysis of, you know, what land is owned by the Cleveland Foundation, what maybe acquisition targets, what the, what the, what the use is for those P's, so that we can sort of understand this as a campus. So I, I will move to postpone seeing that information when, when you choose to come back. I don't want to give a date specific, because I don't know how much time you would want for that. But I, I don't think that it's something that would require longer than, you know, a month, you know, at the max, so.
I think that's fair. That's fair.
I said that.
Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Luca.
Yes.
Gray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Question, both of them?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. All right. I, I believe the next two items are connected. So what, what I would like to suggest is you all go ahead and present both. And then, then we'll entertain motions for each one of those as, after we go through deliberation and comments and everything. So I'm going to have to, were you all in?
Chair, just for the purposes of the swearing, and we have two attendees joining us online as well. We have Colin Mavis and Lisa Jones.
Great. Thanks. Thanks. So I'm going to say it and you're going to say aye or yea or whatever. Do you solemn swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this matter now in hearing under penalty of perjury?
I do.
I do.
Take it away, guys.
Good morning. I, you know, it always strikes me when I come to the table, this moment of, you know, we're asking for conceptual approval. But this represents so much work to get us to this point. So the deference to the commission always, and also to our work with Dan and many city staff members, including, but of course not limited to, you know, always pushing us to understand the best possible moves forward with this work that we're doing. Evelyn, are you driving? Okay. Thank you. It's got to be that time.
Bless you. Thank you.
Um, we will, of course, go through the presentation and give you an idea of what exactly it is that we are building here on site. But I wanted to give you, oh.
There's a little delay.
Gotcha. I just wanted to get our context slides, and maybe we'll go back to the project summary. Yeah, we'll go backwards, I think. Okay. Great. So Bedrock purchased this site in two thousand and twenty-three, just two years ago, almost to the day. This is the site that is known, I think, most commonly in, in the city as the former nucleus site. At that time, we took on and together with permission from this committee and the city, the demolition of the garage at six eleven Huron, which I think everybody roundly agreed was ready for and overdue for demolition. In its site, in its exact location, we were permitted through a zoning variance, which speaks to the other item on the agenda for our project. We were able to install a temporary surface parking lot under the condition of coming back, of course, to this commission and others with a plan. And I remember very clearly sitting in this chair, we heard you, you know, don't wait too long to come back. And so we have been working in the interim carefully on developing the site to that end. What you'll see presented today, of course, is the first chapter of this site on the southwest corner. It's an activation of a building, but for us, it's also representative of our moves to help contribute to and stitch together the work of the Gateway District and of course, to stitch together the work that Bedrock. the work of the Gateway District, and of course, to stitch together the work that Bedrock endeavors, uh, to take on as and is taking on at the riverfront. Um, a big focus for our team certainly is to install this first building, but really carefully to consider site activation, the circulation of people to new and different places, to reinforce those pedestrian paths to activate, um, and to create these spaces, I think, that we see people want in the city. And one of the things, Dan, is certainly, we've talked with the city a lot, but it's Dan and Matt Moss most recently, streets for people, the one-way pairs, the overall context. Um, and certainly you'll see a lot of those, uh, themes threaded through our conversation today. Um, I want to also note, we had a great conversation with the Design Review Committee, uh, last week. Uh, we heard them as well, and we certainly understand, um, their feedback. I think it's one of the benefits of conceptual, uh, to come in and have your project discussed and reviewed, so that your next steps are best informed. Um, so I'm going to turn this over to Brooke to take us through, um, what exactly is Cosm and what do we plan to do with it?
Uh, thank you, Nora. My name is Brooke Smith. I am with Rosetti. We are the architects for the Cosm Building. And we also, uh, designed another Cosm facility, which is currently under construction in Detroit. But I, I will go back to, you know, you know, the question of what is Cosm? And I'm not sure whether the commission is familiar with it, but it's a very immersive, uh, experience that will highlight sports and concerts and other special events that will give you the illusion of being in the absolute best state in any venue that, of, of an event which is occurring. Today, there are only two Cosms which have been built. They are in Los Angeles and Dallas. Uh, there are two currently under construction in Atlanta and Detroit. And presuming it's, uh, approved by the city, uh, Cleveland will be the fifth, um, host of a Cosm facility, which will soon be going international as well. Um, as Nora indicated, um, we've had some great conversations with Dan and design, the folks from Design Review. We, um, we embraced the commentary that we received at this point. But in terms of context, what we like to start always at the macro view to understand, how will the site be approached and, and where are the potential visitors going to be coming from? And of course, we've done an extensive amount of, of research. We understand that much of the, the crowd will be coming from the avenues, which have long been established in downtown Cleveland. And we're working to develop a site that responds to those. Um, this is the general portion of what is referred to, I think, now as Rock Block, um, which has been set aside for the Cosm Facility. These are some general site contexts. Of course, you know, Rocket Arena is immediately to the south. And as the site plan indicates, we're showing this as the first floor plan, where we're trying to understand the, the, the preferred locations for activation entrances into the building. We, unlike many of the other Cosms, uh, this is unique in the, in the fact that it's going to be a four-sided building. Some of the other Cosm facilities are essentially a one-sided building that simply has a front facade. So what we've responded to here is while we acknowledge that the main face of the building will be on Huron, what we are trying to do is to funnel people in along the existing corridors, primarily the Sixth Street corridor, which will, uh, align with the entrance into Rocket Arena and Progressive Field further to the south. We're also looking to dramatically reinforce the Fourth Street corridor. What is important, though, is when we look at the site in more of a macro perspective, we understand that Bedrock has other plans for the balance of the site, both the property to the east as well as the property to the north. While we are not involved in any of those, and we're only involved in the Cosm Building itself, we have had the benefit of being, um, a voice at the table, for lack of a better term. What I can tell you is there's a widely-held consensus that for the benefit of the larger plan, we have all agreed that to develop a highly-activated pedestrian space, place to the north will serve all the common facilities which are anticipated coming down the road. As a consequence of that, we have established one of our primary entrances facing the plaza to the north. The other major entrance is going to be at the corner of Huron and Fourth Street. Um, as a part of the channeling of people, we see Sixth Street as being very important to us. Immediately to the east, we've received confirmation from Cosm that they'd like to develop that as a highly-activated pedestrian, um, site for things during, uh, special events, whether it be pop-up barbecues or just any kind of event which would, um, attract more people inboard to the site. In terms of the activation and where we see the people accessing the building and viewing the building, we had the difficult decision as to what we felt is the best place to locate loading. And we do recognize still Huron as the primary access to the building, to which we did locate the loading as indicated on this plan. Sensive to that, the plan is to develop that entrance as, uh, as something which is fully-integrated into the facade of the building. It's not just going to be an open loading area. It will have a door which will be, uh, sensibly-integrated to the design of the facade along Huron, such that it will not be highly-visible element. We do believe there will be so much activation, um, at the corner of Fourth and Huron, as well as Sixth and Huron. Nobody's going to be focused on, uh, a loading dock door, which is closed 90% of the time. From an, a, a operations perspective, um, there will not be semis, um, servicing this building. The only thing that is utilized to bring product in are pocket boxes, a maximum 35 foot, which will fit within the loading dock, and loading dock door can be closed when that vehicle is in. And from trash removal, we're not using dumpsters. We're using more like residential bins, I would say, larger size, that will be, um, coalesced inside the building. And early in the morning, when trash delivery is, is affected, uh, they'll open the overhead door, and they will roll out the bins, some garbage, and, um, and then pull the bins back in. And this may only happen a couple of times a week. Same with loading of, um, material supplies for food service or, um, or elements from an, um, operations standpoint. Because we're at the conceptual stage, um, what we've provided are these more diagrammatic elevations, mainly for the purposes of showing scale of the building. It will be a three-story building that, um, that has moments of, uh, of penetration that will be, um, directed toward the primary views. One of the purposes why we have the major entrance of the Fourth and Huron is to take advantage of the vistas down to the riverfront development area. In terms of section, this is what makes Cosm very unique. The primary focus is the area referred to as the dome. If you've been into a planetarium, it's very much similar experience. But you, as a visitor to this, will, uh, effectively be a part of a, um, almost a three-dimensional experience. And as they say, you'll have the best seat in the house for a fraction of the price. There are other elements within the building referred to as a hall, which is, um, more of a very large-screen immersive experience. It won't be quite the completely three-dimensional experience. I don't know how much interest you are in the individual floor plans, but this does simply reflect the three levels which are proposed. This is a, an enlargement showing again the basic configuration of the first floor with the primary entrances of Fourth and Huron, as well as a drawn-in entrance off of Sixth Street toward the plaza area. Second floor. Um, we did also include the tree preservation plan, on which I'll allow Nora to speak to.
Sure, thanks, Brooke. We have Colin Mavis on the phone from MKSK. She'll walk us through the tree preservation plan. Um, I also want to note Lisa Jones is on with us. She is representing, uh, the arena. Colin, would you mind walking us through?
Sure. Um, good morning, everyone. Um, uh, so what you see here is the tree preservation plan for the block surrounding the Cosm site. Uh, we are showing the removals of 43 trees, the large percentage, I think all except for three, are, um, cattary pear, which is, uh, noxious and what has been deemed an illegal state, uh, species in the state of Ohio for planting. Um, these are existing trees that have been here for a long time and have, uh, while they are currently large in stature, show a lot of, um, elements of decline. And the species is known for, um, its limb, uh, instability. And you, if you drive past this, um, which I do on a regular basis, you'll notice some of that kind of stretching of the crown and the, and the spacing that's happening. And that is an indicator that these, these limbs can break and, um, fall. So, um, we are proposing for removal of the trees along the full perimeter, uh, to be replaced with new, more diverse, more robust, and, um, better soil-profile plants, um, with the future development. So you see the removals here. And then on the next page, the replacement of the street tree wall, um, conceptually with this plan, and will be further developed with further submissions.
Also included in the deck, and I think most remain too, the second item, um, for review today, was our zoning variance. I'm just going to go forward to the proposed, um, pad preparation that we submitted to the city, to Building and Housing, um, together with the, uh, the director and Dan, you know, worked through how best to acknowledge, um, the requirement on Bedrock to ensure that that surface parking lot is no longer used after the variance sunsets that occurred on July 19th. Bedrock has pulled the parking lot out of commission. It was shut down on the 19th, um, ahead of our mobilization in September of this year. I don't want to cite a date entirely, but, um, you'll see, uh, plan right there is the indication of construction laydown and otherwise, you know, use for the construction purposes for the project. Um, Shannon Leonard has been extremely helpful to us in terms of interpreting the best way to proceed with the variance while keeping the progress going on the project. Um, and while there may be, um, parking for contractors, of course, we're not going to charge them. They will be working on site, and our understanding is that has to be less than 50% of the site anyway, but we are certainly using it, um, to our advantage for, say, mobilization. Thank you.
To the chair, I do have a, a staff report for us today. Um, and, you know, my recommendation, just to keep what you saw, oh, thank you.
Oh, sorry, Dan.
Um, my recommendation, just to keep what you saw fresh in your minds, is to, you know, now that you've seen both the two aspects of this, we'll go through the staff report for the Cosm development, motion on that, and then do a, I'll, I'll walk us through sort of the procedural motion. Um, variances aren't required for what they're proposing, um, just commission approval for that, uh, laydown yard. So, um, jumping into the staff report here, um, for the development itself, um, these are the recommended conditions from staff. Um, and I'll walk through each of these as we go along. Um, just comments around the loading and service dock, um, making sure that that's thoughtfully placed, um, thoroughly reviewed on its location, um, especially giving, uh, special attention to, um, Rocket Arena and the adjacency across the street of Huron, um, with the entrance to the arena, um, the new one-way pair, uh, one-way, uh, pair bike facility, um, that just got installed this year, and I'll present a little bit on that. Um, and then just, you know, similar to the riverfront, we have a building in the round here. We have to provide service somehow, some way. Um, we have two, um, East Fourth and East Sixth that are, uh, highly-traffic thoroughfares. So it's really trying to, um, pick where we do the types of service and where we make those activations, um, more prominent. Um, the pickup-drop-off space, I'll actually, uh, uh, I'll, I'll speak to in a second here, too. And then the facades, um, you know, I'll present a few images of, uh, Cosms elsewhere, um, to talk through. Just making sure we have engaging street-level activity, uh, in our entertainment district. Um, so kicking things off, um, in terms of our loading zone location, where they're proposing it now basically fronts the entrance to the arena. Um, so as you spill out of the arena, the first thing you would see is that loading dock. So we really want to be thoughtful about where it's located, um, if there's a good location, you know, on another side of the building and how that operates. Um, we would like to, to see that thoroughly reviewed. Um, just to the left of the screen, um, is High Avenue, and that's the, um, alleyways, uh, that kind of between the two garage decks that are there. Um, if the applicant isn't looking to extend that alleyway system, and we certainly understand why, like, they're, they really want this active frontage in the round. Um, we have some ideas around how to do, uh, service and, and, um, you know, do that within a very pedestrianized and beautified space. Um, the pickup-drop-off, too, that you see over by the East Fourth text, um, we have enough space in that right-of-way to provide, uh, ample pickup-drop-off, uh, within the existing curb line. Um, so we just don't want to see impacts to the pedestrian environment, um, with that. And, uh, the roadway there is about 50 feet wide, um, 55 feet, so that's large enough for five lanes. Um, obviously oversized. Um, we're really excited to talk with this team more about how we can, um, alter that right-of-way in ways that really facilitate, um, these extensions of East Fourth, um, all the way to the arena. So this is the one-way pair plan. If you guys have been downtown in the last few months, um, you've seen this, uh, getting implemented. It's a quick-build project, um, that changes the directionality of traffic flow. Um, Huron now goes eastbound, um, wraps around to Prospect that loops back, uh, westbound. Um, so it's a, that's why we call it the one-way pair. Um, it creates all this additional, well, first off, it creates a protected bike lane, and that's the first protected bike lane facility in downtown. Uh, but it also creates a lot of additional, uh, pedestrian space, room for patios, wide and sidewalks, um, something especially in the Gateway District with our large crowds, um, definitely very much needed. And we have to have this balance of, uh, moving large, uh, crowds through that space, but also providing for the business owners lots of patio space and a vibrant street. So this was really step one, and a, a larger goal, um, that, uh, we're working with a number of property owners on the street to, uh, build out those patio spaces and have, uh, much more of a vibrant, exciting, greened, uh, street system here in the central, um, entertainment district. So here's an image of what that, uh, what we're planning for this to look like over time. And obviously, Cosm is, um, you know, towards the back of, uh, on the, on the left there. Um, but these are opportunities that, um, this entire streetscape could change, um, yet even this year, a bit more. And then with some more capital investments, uh, over the next, like, uh, two to five years.
Yeah, I'm sorry, i- is, is it done now? The, the one-way pair?
We're very close.
Okay.
Um, as you can imagine, uh, in the kind of construction field now, and, um, kind of supply and demand, um, not all the supplies were readily available, um, as much as we thought. So much, much of it is implemented, um, in terms of the bollards. Um, there's still a few that need to go in. We're also coordinating with active construction projects on the street for private businesses, making sure that they can, you know, can, uh, continue to construct as they need to. Um, and when they're wrapped up, we'll close those gaps. Um, and then we also have an award from Bloomberg, uh, to do some, um, mural painting in these zones, uh, on the street. So that's a very exciting, um, project that's coming, uh, probably next year. So it will continue to grow. We've put out planters in the last week or so. Um, we'll be planting them and painting them, so it's, it's a sort of a, uh, developing quick-build project. This is just some images from what that looks like now. Um, obviously, the arena to the left, the Cosm site to your right. Um, this just shows how much additional space we're able to reclaim with this configuration, um, with both a bike lane and additional pedestrian space. We're really excited to work with Bedrock and the Cosm and Rosetti's team, um, to really envision what this streetscape can look like. Um, now, as a pedestrian, you could stand in the middle of the street, basically, and, and you get these incredible views at what will be the future, um, riverfront site, um, at the pinnacle of this view. Um, and, uh, just another image of what that looks like. Uh, our planters were just dropped off, uh, this past week. Um, but just, I mean, an incredible ability to green this street and make it safer for bicycles, pedestrians. Um, but just, I mean, an incredible ability to green the street and make it safer for bicycles, pedestrians, um patio spaces, all that that type of vibrancy, similar to what we have on East Fourth. And this is a really exciting moment because obviously, East Fourth being a really central hub to this entertainment district, that extension, just one further block south along the Cosm and Rock Block sites to the arena, we could finally link these things. And um East Fourth uh on that side is, you know, in need of uh some changes. So the one-way pair system looked at Huron and Prospect in particular, and we developed all of that. Um, you know, not ne- necessarily knowing when Rock Block would come to fruition, but now that it's here, we're really excited to talk about this stretch of East Fourth and make it feel um like the rest of that district. Um, just an image to show, uh, this is in Columbus, the Blue Jackets Arena, um how you can do things like service with um either box trucks or larger uh semis. Um, you know, those are always off-hour deliveries. Um, so having this be really active, beautified pedestrian spaces, um, you know, uh, it can do both things, and I think a lot of uh, much of Europe does this, and it's a very contemporary way to do loading. You know, with new projects, and we're really looking forward to um that opportunity um here as well. Um, and just to speak to that last uh staff recommendation around the facades, like the Cosm buildings are fabulous, like they're really beautifully designed, um fenestrated uh uh beautifully with a very modernist kind of aesthetic. Um, but there's also some sides that are um kind of like a theater, right? You've got to have dark, darkout windows and and all that. So um, you know, this is the one in LA. Um, just where do we position those sort of back-of-house or those areas that need to be for the programming inside that need to be less fenestrated? Where do we position those and how? And are we activating those? Um, and the applicant has been very, has worked with us very closely on um what that could look like. In LA, they actually had a service drive in the back, so you know, it's a true backside of the building. We're not necessarily gonna have that here, so we really want to understand how all these facades will work and how they'll be engaging. Um, in Detroit, they they're kind of um building this right into the fabric of the uh downtown. So those um sides that are less fenestrated are like typical downtown buildings. You just have another building um like a firewall separation. So it it really blends in nicely. I think that's something that we would love to talk through um further. Um, just, this is just another image of that one in Detroit and how it uh, you know, uh also is engaging that uh pedestrian and plaza space, um active frontages. Um, this also went through design review last week. Um, our committee had a lot of comments. It was quite a a nice discussion, I think. Um, and we summarized their their comments uh here. So exterior spaces in plaza, the desire to have that integrated with the public realm, both across the Cosm site and the greater Rock Block development. And really, a lot of comments about meaningful uh view sheds, focal points and alignments to to district features. So you have East Fifth Arcade um that aligns to East Sixth Pedestrian Way, um obviously, East Fourth in that alignment there. The views back to Rocket Arena, the views to Tower City. Um, these are just beautiful moments that, and how are we kind of aligning the design of the structure to celebrate those and connect those features? Um, they'd also like to just see those um future development parcels, like what the interim condition is. Um, so to the top of the page and the right of the page, those future development parcels, you know, on day one, when Cosm opens, those won't be built, but what will they look like is really the the question. So um something I I know the applicant is working very closely with us on. Um, and then they integrated the staff uh comments as well. So those are here. Um, like I said, I think we should motion on the the other um one after we we motion on this. Uh, so open it up to the committee.
I'm gonna open it up for comments. First of all, you young swipersnappers love acronyms. I mean, I I had to Google P U D O. I had no idea what the hell it meant. So and I don't want to tax my brain with that information, but anyhow, I I just had to bring some levity here. I was gonna open it up to comment. Um.
Uh, I don't know. I'm I'm very excited about this facility. I have heard of it. I saw it on Instagram. Uh, not being from not being from Cleveland, uh, I'm like an avid sports fan of like a happier kind of sentiment. Um, so I'm very, I'm very excited to have sports venue to watch uh Philadelphia sports of in a, in a great way. And I I really appreciate the the thoughtful detail, um east to East Fourth, the Rocket Arena. Um, these are projects that I think um everyone can be excited about, as Dan mentioned, the kind of views and vistas um connecting to the further development that's gonna happen along the river, bringing that pedestrian traffic, that if you're ever on East Fourth during a game or some kind of concert, I mean, the spill-out is tremendous. Um, new bars going on East Fourth. I went to that um new uh country bar um that opened recently. So I, all this is just galvanizing economic activity within the area, and I think we can all be really happy about that.
We have a comment, and I, and I, and I appreciate your comment about the sort of interstitial space that's gonna be created after all the development's done, but there's still gonna be space there um in the interim. I, you know, I'm always an advocate for pop-ups, trying to activate the spaces in differently to see what works, to see what doesn't work. Um, I think it is gonna make a really interesting, when this all develops, how people flow through. You know, it's not this this orthogonal way. People like wandering and you create some really dynamic pockets and spaces for people to recreate and and hang out. So I think there's, there's a lot of um, a lot of um opportunity here to get really creative.
Um, I would, I would say, I see Scott in the back, and I know Dan, you've been a part of this, taking some notes of what uh they've done at North Coast with kind of the pop-ups there, much smaller scale there, but the here, but thinking about how we can bring some of that activity as to uh, uh, August mentioned in the interim.
And and that that P U D O, is it pickup-drop-off? I, I'm, I am not, I I understand what you're saying about the pick-off-drop, drop, pick-up-drop-off. However, is it bad to encroach the way you are? Because people, you know, you, I don't know, I'm just, it's a question. It's not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I think being more intentional about how people get there and through different modes of transportation is important. So, go ahead.
I I just, you know, I I I appreciate the look, and I think it should be studied, but I I know that when lifts back up, like, it 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 messes up traffic. So giving people an opportunity to just pick, get your lift, lift driver and get off, I think is a great consideration.
Good point. That's a good point.
And I'll just uh, to the chair and uh commission member sergeant, our mobility team has worked really hard to develop, um, you know, uh, quick build projects and improvements across the city around pedestrian and bicycle uh safety, and that's really where that comment comes from. Um, we, we feel like we can provide um the space within the existing right-of-way um so that the pull-off is still there. We actually just had a meeting with other property owners in the district yesterday about um how we can designate Lyft and Uber pickup and drop-off to just, you know, clean up the 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 move both, I mean, just on a typical day, but you know, roughly two hundred days a year, you've got events in the district where uh there's active kind of safety forces out there moving traffic. So kind of collaborating and making those designated spots and identifying them clearly and and all that, um, those conversations have already begun.
Yeah. And lastly, more importantly, I I do understand the the dock situation. I I I think let's not be paralyzed by where it is and be more creative about how it's used, when it's used. And 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 what what that sort of residual impact is gonna be when that door is closed versus open. It's open is when you're delivering. So at the end of the day, it, I think, again, I'm not saying that's the best, worst place. What I am saying is let's not, let's not be blind to how it's being uh gonna be used.
And the architect promised that it's gonna be integrated into the facade tastefully and beautifully. So you heard it here first.
Yeah, I would hate to like make those built, like, sticking points because I think, you know, it it, these, these venues are really organic. It sort of reminds me of like a Henry Moore sculpture, you know, and 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 it's, it's art too, right? It's not just, so the interest of that is gonna be collectively is gonna be fantastic. And and I, you know, and let's not get caught up in a couple areas that might not even impact what we're actually gonna see.
I will move, I just want to make sure I'm on the right one. I move approval of the the conceptual approval um of the Rock Block development. Um, I just have to say, Rock Block is like such a great name for a Cleveland accent, like, yeah. Incorporating the design review comments, uh, uh, received.
Second. Roll call, please.
Anthony.
Yes.
Booker.
Yes.
McCray Scott.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Slight.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Okay, so we have one other motion today um related to the project. Oops, and I just want to land on this slide one last time. Um, this is the, um, so the bottom right of that uh drawing there is the former six-eleven Huron um that uh Nora can uh kick, 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 kick things off with for us. Um, so it was a surface lot after the demolition that was approved by this commission. Um, just to cover the um kind of procedural side of the code here, um, whoops, let me jump forward to that section. There we are. So basically, like, um, per the code, the two years of that temporary lot um has sunsetted on July nineteenth. So they're back um with a new development in hand for Cosm. Obviously, Cosm's footprint is much larger than that former deck. Um, and this applicant has worked in just great faith with us over the last two years to bring such an incredible amenity to our city um and is looking at the development of even a wider range of lots in that area. Um, so we appreciate the the amount of uh attention that Bedrock has given to that process. Um, and so um we felt like that's, from a staff perspective, um, the code basically just says that after that demo of the deck happens and the two-year temporary lot sunsets, it just must be uh another non-surface parking use. And we felt like uh to facilitate a development of this scale and what will probably be additional structures as part of Rock Block that a construction storage yard made sense. Um, the lot doesn't really have to change much in terms of demolition or appearance or anything like that. Um, but it will be used to um lay down that construction. In the meantime, there'll be some screening that goes up with that, um, which would actually be a nice way to showcase uh Cosm's uh design. Um, so we just asked that the commission allow us to work with the applicant on a proper sunset date for that new uh temporary use of a, of a laydown yard. Um, we just had a pre-development meeting this week. Um, you can imagine the amount of uh discussions that go on about timeline and um, I I think what we're settling on is what is our certificate of occupancy date for Cosm and um sunsetting that lot uh soon thereafter. And so I I don't know if we need to get into too much of the code. I think almost everyone, uh, maybe Sergeant wasn't here two years ago, but uh, when the when the deck was taken down, you could see it there, kind of center-right of the screen. Um, that was the former deck. Uh, it looked like this. Um, today, that deck is now gone um for the surface lot. Um, these are those three parcels that the deck sat on. Um, another view of that, um, which is now proposed for the laydown yard. Um, and so we're just asking um that the commission for the code um uh review and uh consider that as a location. And I'm gonna kind of move quickly through this code, but if we need to spend time with it, I'm happy to dig into it.
I I want to say one thing. I had no idea there were forty-three trees down in downtown Cleveland. I I I'm obviously being facetious, but I, that, that's a fair amount of trees, right?
Bad trees, though.
Yeah, I understand. Anyhow.
Uh, to the chair, I'd like to make a motion for approval with the conditions that uh recommend uh maintain the surface lot as construction worker parking in addition to construction storage, and they reevaluate the city on a one-year basis if still needed for construction.
Second. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
And Slight.
Yes.
All right. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Oh, I'm excited. Anyhow, um, we have a couple special presentations for public art. Um, item number fourteen, the Love Reading Project address, two thousand Clark Avenue. Now Tara? Luis?
Good morning. Um, yeah.
Before we get started, I do want to say one thing. Um, both of these next public art projects that you're seeing are part of the Mary's Transformative Arts Fund, and we do have um videographer uh Jacob Kessler here, who's gonna be uh filming this portion of the meeting as part of his documentary series on the next public art project that's coming up um behind this one, but he's gonna be doing both.
Um, but yeah, so two transformative art funds on the same agenda. This is actually the first time I've seen this this year. Uh, but this is part of um Ariadne Verdez's Transformers Art Fund, um, and what we're calling the Art Garden. And um, you know, fully supported by Metro West. And by the way, I'm Luis Rivas, um, arts and culture coordinator, arts and culture coordinator for Metro West, um, CDC, um, full support from Jasmine Santana, council member, and then obviously our CDC. Go to So just as a summary of the overall kind of project that we're leading here, and this specific Transformers Art Fund is really focusing on murals and sculptures and the impact that they can have on communities. Clark Fulton and Stockyards and just kind of the near west region is really well-known for its art installation murals, and this is kind of gonna be no different, except I want to iterate something that I actually didn't put specifically on on the slides, and that's the historical context of the building that we're gonna be talking about. If we can actually go to the next slide. So this is actually gonna be at the corner of Twinkie Lane and Walton, and the really cool fact about this that I learned that kind of through discovery of researching this and researching lots of buildings that we can potentially put murals on is, interestingly enough, this street was renamed Twinkie Lane out of kind of the acknowledgement of the Twinkie factory that used to be there. And we actually got a tour of this, this factory and the building itself, and we found out that there's still that original Twinkie syrup still in those pipes. It's actually still usable. Um, but I I thought that was a really neat fact. And um, so the owners of this uh this building are not Twinkie owners, but they are instead the owners of Zubal Books, a really well-known online kind of book distribution and book, um, I guess, purchasing site, if you want to call it that, but very well-known um and kind of a staple in the neighborhood, in the Clark Fulton neighborhood for a really long time. One other thing that I want to iterate is that this is actually, and through some research, we share the border of West Twenty-Fifth with Tremont CDC, and I want to just let you guys know that they were engaged. They are aware of this project and that they're fully on board with this. But this is just kind of showing some histor- uh some, a text of Twinkie Lane, kind of going down it, very old um factory industrial kind of sites and go next. This is kind of taking you down, and right here, I want to stop because this is actually where the mural will begin, on that left-hand side near the, the parking garage or the um, the garage right there is where the the mural will begin. And this is actually the the facade that's really gonna see the most exposure to the full mural. It'll almost be a wraparound mural. Uh, you guys, you guys will obviously see it at the end. It'll be a wraparound mural. This is kind of going, coming down Walton, where some people walking down Walton residents um will see as well. Um, and one other thing that I did, did want to mention is that these residents were engaged. Some of them were, were very excited at the project. Some of them, we weren't able to get a hold of necessarily, but these residents are informed. They have the mural themselves laid out. Um, and actually, through through talking to some of them, they actually have lived there long enough to see other murals um come to this area. So really interesting. Um, just giving the condition of the wall. Uh, the wall is pretty good. We're gonna do some, some minor tuck pointing, um priming for the material for the paint as well. Um, but the wall is in pretty good condition overall. And yeah, it'll be a pretty big mural. Um, one of the things that was mentioned during design review as well is that they wanted to do the inclusion of a plaque, which we are is that they wanted to do the inclusion of a plaque, which we are committing to as well. As this is part of a bigger series of murals, we're gonna kind of be kind of ordering these plaques and making sure that people know where these plaques are coming from and who was associated with it. And this is kind of the, the view coming from Clark onto Walton. But yeah. And then overall, this is the design. This spells out, the reason that this is called the Love of Reading is because these are actually book covers. The art was inspired by books and their book covers. And they almost had a play done to them to kind of make them into what we call literary glyphs, which is just the book cover itself and some tweaking of the art and spelling out of actual letters. So you may recognize some of these book covers. We have Harry Potter in there, Alice in Wonderland, Be for Vendetta, Chronicles of Narnia, you know, very popular book covers that at the end of the day, because of the association with Zubal Books, we wanted to reiterate that kind of desire and curiosity for literacy, especially in a time where, you know, we're increasingly, increasingly skying literacy rates. No, no worries. And this is how it'll look on the facade. So again, this is a dedication to kind of Zubal Books. It's, it's, um, kind of staple in, in the community. And yeah, really just incorporating literacy and art into one piece, spelling out the love of reading. At minimum, it'll make people curious kind of glance. And at maximum, we know that this is a dedication to literacy and, and what art can do to kind of create and spread that curiosity of what potential book covers these are. And that's its current base.
Thank you. I'm excited about this project. Anytime we have murals that promote literacy, that gets a rise out of me. I love that. We did get this approved at the July 23rd Near West Design Review. We've received the owner's letter of permission for the mural on the building. And I know the, the physical address is 2000 Clark Avenue, even though this is going on the backside of the building. There is another heat-up-by-vinyl mural in a black and white photography by Gabriel Gonzalez, who actually has a show at Cleveland Foundation right now on the Clark Avenue side of the building. So this would be an experience on the other side of the building, quite a bit of ways from that. And the only other thing I think Luis didn't mention is they plan to clear coat the, the mural as well as the owner is gonna do a cash match on maintaining the mural over time. And the last thing I was gonna say is I did let them know that they want to look into making sure that the imagery from the book covers is fair use and that there aren't any copyrights associated with it. So outside of that, I, I think it's a great project and I'm supportive of an approval today. Thank you.
Well, first of all, I, I, I think I say this every time we see murals. The quality and content of murals are like awesome now. And because I, I, we've grown, we're growing up. We're getting better at it as a city, as a city, not you, sir. Any other comments?
No, I, I move approval for the Love of Reading mural.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Good luck, sir. Um, we have next on the dock and another Public Art presentation. 9413 Sophia Avenue Project. Okay, what's TAF mean?
Transformative Arts Fund.
Okay, see, you said that before. I'm just, I...
And I do want to say before the applicant, Melina, speaks that this is the second iteration of a much larger context project that was one of, uh, one of, a very intriguing project of the Transformative Arts Fund. Very different than what we're used to seeing, very creative and environmental, environmentally conscious. So I want to commend the applicant on that. And with that said, I am gonna turn it over to Melina.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we all provide a bit of context on the project as a whole and then the portion that you'll be reviewing today. So thank you so much for allowing me to present the proposed work. I'll be sharing about 9413 Sophia Avenue, which is both the title of the project and also the address at which it's located. So the project operates as a case study which choreographically deconstructs and biocycles a home condemned by the Cuyahoga County Land Bank, exhibiting maintenance of the built environment as art and resulting materially in a participatorily designed installation for future use. The proposed installation will exist on-site for one year and then will decompose into the earth as it will be made out of mycelium. Biocycling refers to a process in which demolition waste is chipped up, sterilized, and used as substrate to inoculate with mycelium, which is the root structure of mushrooms. The mycelium remediates lead and other heavy metals present in the waste material and binds the substrate together to create a new buildable material. By completing a demolition in this alternative manner and including neighbors of the land in the following design process, I aim to explore a process of living in and adapting the built world that meaningfully considers people's active concern for their environment. A couple notes on the logistics of this work. The project is funded by the City of Cleveland and the Cleveland City Council's Transformative Arts Fund. The total investment in this project is $364,000, which has been budgeted to cover every aspect from deconstruction to installation and ongoing maintenance of the land. Ongoing maintenance will be provided by Migrro Connect, a partner of the project. And street parking is available on the streets surrounding the proposed project. So next slide, please. The home that once stood at 9413 Sophia Avenue was built around 1910. In 2024, when I began this project, the home had been forfeited and condemned and was in the inventory of the Cuyahoga Land Bank. I worked with a crew from CNJ Contractors to deconstruct a home in a choreographed manner. This involved deep discussion and intervention on the physical collaborative work between, between the crew and their machine. On the pragmatic side, this also allowed us to carefully sort the materials. I'm currently working to process the demolition waste into usable, into the usable medium, which will make up the eventual installation. This is a process of chipping up the material, mostly the plant-based elements such as wood, asphalt shingles, cellulose fibers, pasteurizing or sterilizing that material, and then inoculating the mixture with mycelium before packing it into molds or sculpting it topographically on the land. Next, I please. Uh, community engagement and participation in the design process is critical in my effort to realize an installation on-site. The 9413 Sophia Avenue project team and I hosted 11 workshops, 12 monthly onsite gatherings, and a community design session in addition to other efforts to connect with the neighbors, such as door knocking, digital and physical surveys, and time spent in local establishments just chatting with people. Please. As I mentioned before, this work is funded by the City of Cleveland and Cleveland City Council's Transformative Arts Fund. And my team and I have been grateful to receive the support from Councilwoman Gray, Councilwoman Griffin, and other leadership in the city thanks to their interest in the potential of supporting and funding art at this scale. The project site is located in District 7 and Ward 4. And these images provide some site context. You can see that the project locate is occurring off of Woodhill Road or 93rd. It's a one-way street, so you can't drive down that view, but that's the view from the corner. And next slide, please. Um, so during the period of time last fall when I was working with the Cuyahoga Land Bank to prepare for the demolition, they proposed a series of site improvements such as removing the retaining wall and grading the land to meet the sidewalk at a gentle slope, as well as some necessary landscaping because of that retaining wall removal. Today, the site is graded and hosts two shipping containers, which were seen in the previous slide, which hold the material and the equipment being used to biocycle the former house. Both shipping containers will be moved offsite by the time the installation is complete in September. The land is currently still in the formal possession of the Cuyahoga Land Bank, but I'm anticipating a lease from them, which will put the land under the care of a partner of this project for the next year and for the duration of the existence of the ephemeral park. This slide shows some of the images of the mycelium blocks that will be on-site. Mycelium bricks and topographically sculpted mycelium inoculated substrate will make up the installation. So these are the more bound-together bricks or components. And then the more sculpted elements will have a similar appearance, but be, rather than sculpted in molds beforehand, will just be sculpted live on the site, so they won't look quite as compact. Any land which would benefit from being seeded or planted will be done with native plants as well. So the planned drawings that detail the installation show a design that reflects the plan of the home that was once there, bringing back the memory of critical elements of a home, such as the enclosing walls, the dining room table, staircases to ascend and descend, and the hearth or oven, which has been abstracted a bit. And by abstracting these elements and creating them entirely of mycelium bricks or sculpted substrate, the mycelium, or the, sorry, the space can be used in a number of ways which were desired by people who contributed ideas during the design process. For example, a space to sit, a space to hold a small gathering, a space to walk around sort of a designated path, or a space for kids to play. Yeah, so all of these elements will be made out of mycelium. Leading up to the sort of rest of the installation are a series of pavers. So those will be level with the ground. The sort of mounded components that enclose the sort of formal site will be mounted to a height of about four feet. So it'll be an enclosure that is safe to play on and climb on, but one that still provides a feeling of enclosure. Yeah, so the staircases as well will be, uh, to code. So the standard staircase rise and run measurements. So they won't be, you know, a height that would be dangerous to fall from. So everything is designed to be something that can be engaged with by a variety of ages and ability levels and also elements that can gently slope into the ground over time as they begin to decay and decompose as the ephemeral nature of the material allows. Yeah, so the proposed plan for signage involves replicating, using compressed mycelium mounted on a post, the existing design of signs which designate historic sites in Ohio with the intent of describing the history of the house that was once on-site, as well as the project which led to the current landscape of the installation. And the proposed plan for lighting includes solar-powered lights embedded into the groundsca- landscaping to gently illuminate the site when the sun goes down, as well as existing streetlights. Thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Mission members, any comments or thoughts? Oh, I'm sorry, Tara, did I... Tara, please go. You're, you're so...
No, I'm, I'm in support. I think this is a very unusual way to express public art. And I like that about it because it's different. It, it, it breaks the mold of what we typically see. And again, because it's so environmentally conscious, especially with lead paint being an issue here in our city and just seeing these items deconstructed and made safe, I think is, is, is really amazing and, and very forward-thinking.
I, I, just a question to the applicant. With the mycelium, is there like a variety and species of mushrooms that'll be used?
It's a really good question. We're mainly using reishi just because the fruiting body is very hardy. Something like loister decomposes really fast and the level of hydration and moisture in the resultant mycelium is a bit too high to be able to create as lasting of a artifact. So yeah, reishi is, is mainly what's used.
Cool.
What type of signage are you all gonna have here? I forgot to ask that.
So the idea for the signage so far was to replicate the typical historic plaques that are used around Ohio to designate different sites. So that will also be made out of mycelium, just to keep consistent with the material. And we'll just describe a bit of context about how the current way that the land is used came to be, and then just some history about the, um, the site as it's, uh, as it had been used before as well.
Yeah.
I do have a question. I'm trying to put this in my mind where this is. Which major streets?
Yeah, it's down Woodhill, just south of Buckeye, where it turns into Buckeye Shaker.
Oh, yeah.
So it's, um, it's very close. It's like the Buckeye Woodhill neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I was just trying to, uh, major intersection. Because I know I, I drive that way when I go to Shaker Square, so I was just trying to...
My aunt owned a home on Sophia Avenue for, from before I was born. And she passed away some years ago, about 10 years ago, but she spent her, almost her whole adult life on Sophia Avenue at the other end of the street. Oh.
All right, I, I, I think a very creative way to, to be sustainable, but also create impact in the community. I mean, I can tell you as a child, when I dated myself, when the first district police station was being constructed on 1030th, I remember that influenced me to become an architect. Because I would, you know, I watched this thing sort of like, I just come out of the ground. And, and, and I was there playing. And, and so that, that influenced me greatly just to kind of understand how things are done. So, but the deconstruction part of it is an education, but also creating a nice abstract way of sort of, uh, uh, creating, you know, this, this environment that really was there, right? But it's, it's just a different way of, of addressing it and presenting it to the community.
It honors what was.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Mr. Chair, move for approval of the Sophia Avenue project.
Second. All right. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Booker?
Yes.
McCray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Well, I think Mr. Skinner's next. I, um, oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to just move through this. All right, you guys peruse and offer up an opinion?
Mr. Chair, I move for approvals of administrative approvals, 846, 847, all the way down, 2025.
Second. Roll call, please.
Anthony?
Yes.
Booker?
Yes.
Gray Scott?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Slade?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Skinner.
Would you like clickers?
Yes. Okay. I don't understand.
Uh, hello, everybody. I know this has been a long meeting, so I will try to run through this fairly quickly. Just to sort of little set as a reminder for everyone, I'm Scott Skinner. I run the North Coast Waterfront Development Corporation. So independent nonprofit set up by the city to, uh, in Clinton, in Houston, with the city to facilitate lakefront development. Director Immersman asked that I come and brief this committee on the request for qualifications for development partners that we recently released. So I'm gonna walk through an overview with a few selected slides from the OFQ, and then I'm happy to answer questions as well. The, the, the purpose of this, of releasing this OFQ, we've been working on it for a while, is if there, if there ultimately is no stadium on the site, we need to start the planning of uses, street grids, public space, all of that immediately. All of that work takes a long time. And while the, the current Brown's lease extends through the end of the 2028 season, four or five years in a development timeline is not a crazy amount of time. So because it becomes a much more complicated project without a stadium, we, we want to start that work immediately and start that work with development partners. So we will go through another planning process for what will, what will ultimately go there. The purpose of this OFQ is to bring in development partners who share in our vision and who share in the principles and values of all of the lakefront master planning, community engagement work that have, that has happened up to this, uh, up to this point and to work with, who want to invest and who ultimately will be the end users of that space as we go through this new planning process. So this first slide is just, which is for you as well, an overview of what we've done, what we've done to date to set the table for bringing on development to the site. The first is the North Coast Connector, the first phase of which is a $284 million project that is bringing the shoreway... Uh, the first is the North Coast Connector, the first phase of which is a two hundred eighty-four million dollar project, uh that is uh bringing the shoreway. Reimagine the shoreway, bring it down to grade and turn it into more of a city boulevard from West Third to about East Twelve. As well as the construction of a hundred foot wide pedestrian only land bridge that will connect downtown Cleveland, the Southern End and Masiere. For the convention center to ultimately to the waterfront. Uh, we put in place new innovative financing tools. So the city's presented a lot about its shore to shore. Tiff District, we also presented to this body uh six months ago now about a new community authority, which is a uh innovative and semi-complicated uh public private financing tool that allows us to facilitate the development of workspace and public amenities in a really interesting way. It's a tool the state of Ohio has been using for forty years, and this is the first one established in Cleveland. Um, you know, it's since the stadium on the site, the the master planning work that's been done over the last three years still informs this and is really important. The the city, even before I was in this role, spent three years seeking community engagement from every neighborhood in Cleveland. What they want to see on their downtown lakefront, and that will still inform the ultimate vision. Um, and then lastly, we have uh just some engaged in a little bit of place making and activation with the North Coast Yard. Um, in a way that we hope will start to create a sense of place for developers as we bring them on uh to work with us. And just as an overview, what we are asking for is fairly we're asking for development partners to share on this vision. Um, we're asking for folks, if folks are interested in master planning the entire fifty acre site. Similar to uh the Bedrock Project on the riverfront, we are we are interested there and we'll we'll take those uh those proposals. If folks are interested in one discrete component of the site, if a multifamily builder or hotel builder wants to come and says they want to take four acres, we're interested in that as well. The goal here is to get uh as many uh sort of letters of interest and qualifications as we can. And start to put the pieces together for what's what we think is going to be best for the downtown lakefront ultimately. And we are open to any and all uses. I think I have an outline down here, but housing, hospitality, hotels, corporate office, retail, recreation, entertainment, sports, cultural amenities, public space. We really are trying to cast as wide a net as possible. Um, so we can ensure that one, the responses we get are in line with all of the community that we've received so far. And so we can start to move forward, I think is is most wide. Uh, so this is just um the assess for how we're going to go about this as as well as expectations. So throughout the document, throughout the RFQ, we do state several times uh the design principles and the values and principles uh that would drive from field operations, three-year master planning process with the city of Cleveland. So the four sort of pillars of that, the four pillar values of economic opportunity, racial equity, climate resiliency, and joy. Those still are the four pillars through which we'll be evaluating potential proposals as they bring them in uh uh and and as we look at them. Uh, similar to the guiding design principles. So in the blue box on the left, you see the design principles that were outlined again after several years of community input. Uh, for the downtown lakefront, embracing the skyline and the bluff, varying the shoreline, celebrating the working waterfront, integrating top hole and equitable development. Center equitable multimodal transit, expand water access, connect core to shore, and foster joy activation. And then on the right, uh what you see are, I'm I'm not going to read through all of these, uh basically a a list of um how those principles uh would be reflected into actual design of new space. So everything from encouraging public access to uh developing integrated and district parking structures to setting proactive sustainability goals and and a number of other items. Uh, those are all how we see the, again, the the values and the principles that were derived from this master planning process being implemented into a new vision with development partners. Uh, this is the site itself. Um, so this is uh the again, the RFQ is purposely vague. If folks want to take on all fifty acres or a component of it, we'll look into that. Uh, we even leave open um if there are creative reuses of a stadium. Um, we're interested in hearing those proposals, um and however likely or unlikely they may be. And the last thing I'll say about the stadium specifically is although it is um uh also made their intentions clear for what they prefer to do, um if they do decide to come back and end up on the lakefront, uh we have an existing twenty-five acre master plan uh and would welcome them with In this, I think it's helpful to lay out sort of the three chunks of the site. I think that's technically a term. Um, but uh you have the the sort of the the existing public space that is currently un uh unutilized, which is the parking lot. Um, you have the stadium, that's that thirty-seven point five acres you see there. You have the twenty-two acres of land that the current stadium sits on that um should it go uh and be demolished, will be developed. Um, and then you also have a land bridge, which I just, I always like to show this image to point out that the land bridge is six acres on its own. Which is sort of a feature in and of itself, right? It's not just a way to get folks from downtown to the lakefront, which it is, but it's also a feature in and of itself that is designed to be programmed and designed to be interactive on a regular basis. Um, and this is just uh sort of we've talked, we spent the last, uh gosh, uh year talking to local region and national developers. Um, trying to get input on what would make this an attractive site, where the sort of challenges of development that they see. And then most importantly, what would make them more likely than not to respond to this RFQ. So we can cast as wide a net as possible. So we've collected a lot of data. Information. And one of the things that every developer we spoke to said is your your site is not connected to anything. Um, and vehicular perspective and from a pedestrian perspective, it's really difficult to get there. The North Coast Connector, which we talked a little bit about earlier, is meant to um to to begin to solve that challenge. Um, intersections at East Ninth, Erie Side and West Third uh uh connected more directly to downtown from a vehicular and a pedestrian and the land bridge itself again is a direct connection from downtown. Our short core to shore initiative going from the riverfront square and through the miles, all public space over the land bridge, um so public space and down to the waterfront, you start to see sort of this this broad vision of connectivity. On the note of broad visions of of connectivity, I'd just like to show this slide in like every presentation I do and all the materials that I put out because it gives it gives folks a good idea of how we're actually connecting our waterfronts as well as all of the recent major investment that's been going on um in this area for 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 quite some time. So it looks at the North North Coast Connector in the broader context of uh RTA routes and the broader complex of the lakefront bikeway and uh all the other investment that we've seen in the last ten years and we'll see in the next ten years. Um, this is a little bit of the back, um this year, three months ago, talking about the North Coast Yard. Um, this has now been, we opened in mid-June and has been ongoing. We'll continue to be activated through the end of August and into a little bit of September. Um, but this is a temporary public park built on the lake, on the lakefront. It's right next to the Mather. And that stadium, it's about an acre of the twenty, the thirty plus acre site. For context, it takes up eighty of twenty-one hundred parking spaces on that site uh that exists currently. Um, and it's been very successful. On Friday nights, we would TVC, two to three hundred people out there. We have free roller skating and a DJ and food trucks and a bar uh that's open on Friday evenings. Uh, Thursday nights, the Rock Hall does live music and also a bar open. Wednesday nights, P League has this extraordinary basketball league over the course of the uh basketball tournament over the course of the summer that will um that will come to an end with this like really great large final four. They're doing that in a couple of weeks here. Um, uh, and there's a small stats, a European style sort of soccer league that is in cement on Mondays, but it's also really popular. We have skateboarding lessons Friday during the day and just a lot of programming throughout the entire week. So it's been highly activated. And when I've taken, you know, um uh elected officials and even before the RFQ came out, potential developers down to the site. It really helps to see the vision. When you're down there when there's nothing there, it's tough to imagine sort of what can be. But once you see people there as active and you see color, um it it creates more of a vision, starts to create a sense of place and you can start to see what it's going to be. It's also a piece of a development strategy. If you look at uh large scale developments across the country, a good example is Navy Yard in Washington DC, which is very different than what we're trying to achieve here. But uh temporarily activation before long-term infrastructure construction is a is a pretty common thing to do and a way of driving additional development in in interest to the site. Um, so this is what we're asking for. Again, this is an RFQ, not an RFP. So there's a whole bunch of things that are in here, but really we're asking for three things. We're asking uh who who are you and who's your team going to be? We're asking you to show examples of work that you've done before. Um, and then we're asking you to tell us what you think. It could just be in writing, what you think, what what you sort of use you would propose here and how much space you need to do it. Um, from there, establish a selection committee made up of members of my board, um that includes representatives from the city uh to evaluate all the submissions that we get. Um, uh, have honestly no concept of how many we're going to end up with. Um, we then take the qualified applicants that submit, um and we will ask them to so uh to follow up with interviews and sort of very base level proposals. With the goal of having a development teams in place um by the end of the year. So early next year, we can start the process of bringing, you know, very conceptual plans back to the community and and start the process of additional engagement for what this site can look like uh at a stadium. Um, and and to sort of check ourselves to ensure that what we're proposing is uh is is in line with the vision, values, and principles that were set forth from three years of community engagement across the city. So that was a lot of information. I'm happy to answer questions. Oh, here's the timeline as well. Um, it went out July fifteenth. We're expect asking for responses in September nineteenth, and we should uh be able to announce uh uh selections in November.
First, I have a couple of comments and I'll turn it over. Um, I I think um the way you have put this together is is awesome, uh because oftentimes we jump the gun. We and I don't know why we went this way in the city. We always make an RFP. And you get caught up with cost and fees and services and 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 to create like a platform where people can be creative. And and you're very succinct, three pages here, fifteen pages here. You're not getting like, you know, a plethora of like proposals that are
It's more from my own time as well.
And and I think that's great. And I, the other thing I think is is brilliant, it's the fact that you left it open. And you also have the ability as an entity to to symbol a team. And not get locked into one entity. There may be three entities, maybe four, maybe one. But at the end of the day, you you created that flexibility to drive this. Um, I, the question I have for you is, um how how can, how can the like the state and the county, and I know they've been participating. How how can we leverage more commitment from 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 those guys? Because I think to your point, no, seriously, the reason why I'm saying that is this is a classic situation whereby public investment needs to happen.
Yeah.
It can't happen concurrently. You need to create the path. You need to create the the vision. Cause if those things don't happen, then the connectivity that you mentioned, the land, uh many of that stuff is gonna gonna matter.
Uh, so one, thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. Um, uh, two, to answer your question, you know, there's, I sort of put the infrastructure in two categories, right? There's one, the North Coast Connector, which the first phase of that is funded. Like, we're starting in twenty twenty-seven. We're gonna be finished in twenty thirty. Those are requirements from our federal funding sources. We're moving forward. Um, the city is bringing on an owner's representative. They're in that selection process right now. Then we'll be bringing on a design builder uh to sort of finalize the design and actually um then there's then there's infrastructure for the site, right? Which includes uh bulkhead work, utility extension and capacity extension. Um, if you're talking about a fifty acre uh acre site, you're talking about a street grid with sidewalks that 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 is new, and that is um in terms of how to get the city and state involved. I mean, they they are involved. I can't speak on their behalf um directly. Um, you know, there will be substantial infrastructure costs and the way that, you know, in the background as a developer, I I think about it as a capital stack, right? There's no one entity or even one second partner that's gonna cover all of the necessary infrastructure costs. And add on to infrastructure. There's a, there's a whole nother feature to to uh to to include there. Um, but I think all of our, all the partners, public and private can pitch in and substantially on trying to fill in that capital stack. Um, so we have all of those things, we we so we can complete all of those things. This is also a longer term project than it would have been if it was just a twenty-five acre site with the stadium there, right? So I think um the infrastructure needs in um in one portion of the site are highly different than the infrastructure needs in another portion of the site. So the also, we also need to think about sort of phasing with the development partners and what that looks like. Um, it a as the infrastructure work phases along with it.
You wouldn't have the answer, but I it's just nice to know that you're thinking beyond the plan. So the plan always gets put on the shelf and it's never implemented. And you know, hopefully, um I'm still around to see some of this happen. Are you? So.
Um, through the chair to the to Mr. Skinner, how is it possible, or is it possible to get a copy of your presentation?
Uh, sure, the RFQ is public. It's out there. Um, I'm happy to send a link if Director Merchant does already have one um to to view it or send the PDF directly. We're working through and the the RFQ comes from my organization, so we're working through CBRE um to release this. Uh, so there is a link to a website where you put in your information, and that's that's on purpose. That's one, so we can track who is interested and we can follow up. Uh, and then two, um, you know, this, we want to make this look like a real estate offering for developers across the country, right? Um, so there is a link that you can put information in. If you don't want to do that for for this committee, I'm happy just to send the PDF. That's a fifty-page document, so it's quite extensive. But um you're it's 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 public, uh, I'm happy to send it.
Thank you. I'd like that.
A a couple uh questions and thoughts. Um, the, I think the the city uh announced or there was announcement of the multimodal award for the, I think, almost close to a million dollars in funding for planning. Is that part of the kind of enticing, you mentioned the connection piece, is that part of the the RFQ like?
Sure. Uh, the the site itself is not part of this RFQ. Um, it's, it it helps and is connected to it, right? And that we're looking at this, at at the lakefront of the North Coast is a broader vision than just this site. So it it does help. It is beneficial. Um, I imagine that that site will have its own RFQ in the future. Uh, the grant that we received was for planning. Uh, it's nine hundred sixty thousand dollars, uh and that is to Amtrak and RTA and Norfolk Southern CSX and sort of those users and and figure out how to turn that site into something that is more than what it is now, I guess, is is the best way to say it. Something that is multimodal but especial that can be activated on its own. Um, there there's a lot of different ways to do it, and it's the the grant is to explore what those ways are and ultimately come up with a recommendation for how to move forward. So this isn't, that land isn't part of this RFQ, um but it is connected in that to make this an enticing site, we need to think about the connectivity like holistic scale.
You mentioned um the kind of review of qualifications done internally by your organization during the planning process. There was a like a series of committees made up by, I think, common stakeholders or subject matter expertise within the city. Is there gonna be somewhat of a similar strategy to this?
Still TBD. Um, it's, a lot of this is all going to depend on the responses that we get. Yeah, right. It's like if if we if we end up saying that it makes sense to work with one master developer across the entire site. That's going to require a different process than if we have five different developers doing different things. So I don't wanna, I'm not trying to be evasive. I don't I just wanna, it's it it just depends, and we haven't sort of figured out what that next step is going to be. There will be additional community engagement and public engagement, um uh the 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 next iteration of a planning process here, though.
And I think that leads to my my last point. I I think uh just generally, I've seen a lot of, I think, increased communication from the city side on these efforts about, you know, saying that the RFQ is out, talking about North Coast Harbor. Um, with kind of the kind of tenuous situation with the Browns. I think when you mentioned kind of selections uh being like, I guess, uh notified. Oh, I thought you, oh, I I thought I heard that wrong, that selections would be um broadcasted. Is there, or maybe maybe a more direct question, is there any kind of point in kind of that commution, communication cycle that after interviews and people are kind of uh selected that there will be kind of a uh some kind of communication with the broader public about kind of this point being reached and what they might anticipate?
Well, we we plan to announce who we're selecting by the end of the year.
Right, yeah, that's awesome.
With the idea that in Q one, we can hit the ground running with them on the next version of this.
I I would say I would also, you know, that that message Oh, yeah. Heightened succinct and
Absolutely.
And awesome.
Mr. Slife, you you always have words of wisdom.
Okay.
This is just for information.
Yeah, that's right.
Anyone else?
I appreciate it. Actually, of course, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, happy to. Yeah.
You know, I knew the RFQ was out, and I had come to develop. Oh, yeah. I don't get in the middle of stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah. And and feel feel free to send this out to, you know, in 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 any groups you've worked with this one, please. Thank you very much, everybody. I really appreciate your time.
Well, Director?
Thank you. Um, thanks, everyone, for your time here this morning. I have two items for you. Um, the first is that we're very excited to announce that uh Senior Assistant City Planner Kayla Flake has received a promotion to city planner. She's in the zoning section, and this will allow her to continue and expand and grow in her work around zoning for the city. She started with us in two thousand twenty-three as an intern and has stepped up and continued to grow in her expertise. So we're very excited to um to to share that and to be a part of her career advancement as a a follow-on to this promotion. Her current job, which is Senior Assistant City Planner, will be posted soon again in the zoning section. So we'll be promoting that and encourage again in the zoning section, so we'll be promoting that and encouraging more wonderful people to apply to join our team. Um, and my second item is just logistically for our documentary team here that's associated with the Sophia Avenue um transformative arts fund project. They, as you noticed, were filming during this as part of their documentary creation, which is part of the art project, and they have uh waivers for us to sign to consent to being in their film. So, um that's all that I've got.
Yes.
And
I want to make one comment and make things very clear. I I think Louise Love Twinkies have a shelf life of titanium, so if we find some syrup or Twinkies in that building, they're probably still fresh. Anyway.
I would say they're maybe edible.
I would know this on the one paragraph made to drawing that you were not compensated. I think it's the second paragraph that says I've been acknowledged. I've been compensated or something.
Okay.